I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner for Farmington. This is the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. I will start with roll call and then turn it to you. So I've got Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Robert Canto.
Present.
Patrick Carrier.
Here.
David St. Germain.
Here.
I will note for the record Liz Sanford is absent. Scott Halsted.
Here.
Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
And Kyla Zimmerman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
Thanks, Shannon. So good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Town Planning and zoning meeting on February 12, 2024. My name is Scott Halsted. Quick announcement to start, if anybody is here for the Town of Farmington application for special permit for renovation of the 1928 building, that's actually going to get continued to February 26. So we just wanted to let everybody know in case you were here for that. We'll get started. Matt, can you do the water first? Legal notice next?
Yeah, I'll give it a go. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, February 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Town of Farmington application for special permit for renovations to the 1928 building at 10 Monteith Drive, R20, R40 Zone. Carrier Holdings LLC application for a three lot subdivision, special permit to construct three new homes in excess of 3,200 square feet, and special permit for consideration for the protection of historic factors at 34 West District Road, R30 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation is in person at 1 Monteith Drive Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this fifth day of February 2024. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Scott Halsted, Commissioner.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. So we have one new business item to accept an application. Can we get a motion in a second, please?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to the accept, to accept the application by Naga Prasanna, Naga, Nagrejan at 8 Circle Drive for special permit for home business, commercial kitchen use in the B, I mean, R9 LG Zone and scheduling public hearing with a recommended hearing date of March 11, 2024.
Seconded. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, we will shift into our public hearings. The first one, as I mentioned, is from the Town of Farmington, renovation of the 1928 building. So we just need to continue this, Shannon, open and continue?
Yes, please. And there's been another slight change. They'd like to continue it to March 11th.
Oh.
Due to availability of their consulting staff.
Sounds good.
Please.
Also, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to continue the application by the Town of Farmington for 10 Monteith Drive for special permit for renovation of the 1928 building in the R40 Zone till the meeting of March 11, 2024.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Bobby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Next applicant. Well, let me explain a little for the public in particular how the, the public hearing process works. So we have sort of a procedure for this where the applicant will present to the commission. The commissioners will each ask questions of the applicant. We'll then open it to the public, those in the room first, followed by those that are online. Once all that feedback has been received, we'll ask the applicant respond. We do ask that you please keep comments limited to five minutes per person. And if your comments echo those of previous speakers, it's okay to just acknowledge that in your comments rather than restate. And we really just share these guidelines with you to be respectful, both of the public's time and the commission's time. We really do believe the public comment is, is valuable in our decision-making process. So just wanted to put that out there before we get going. So with that, our next hearing is from Carrier Holdings, 34 West District Road, application for three lot subdivision.
And I'm going to be recusing. For the record, I'll be recusing myself from this one.
Thanks, Patrick. Yep. So Bruce and Mike, are you okay to be appointed? And Liz and Patrick's place to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Who do we have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney James Iogus, 104 Bellevue Avenue in Bristol. For the applicant, Mr. Carrier, Michael Carrier is here representing the family business. They are the people who are under contract to purchase this property. The property is still owned by the family. The family is located here. They're sitting in the back row. They may address the commission at some future time. This application consists of three components. One is the request to demolish this house located in what the is considered to be historic property in some respects. The second part of the application is to construct homes on these lots that are slightly in excess of the zoning requirements. And of course, the third part of this is the subdivision approval for the three lot subdivision. I'd like to discuss the, the historic nature of the property with the commission and explain to the commission why, in our opinion, this property cannot be saved. The, the family has owned this property for a very long period of time. I think the mother was originally born in this house, but the property has been owned by the family. And over the past couple of months since the property's been available, they have spoken with numerous real estate people and other people who were interested in the house in an effort to sell the house as a single-family home on the existing property. What they came to realize is that the, the cost of rehabbing this house was so extensive that it exceeded the value of the property. And they couldn't find anybody that was interested in the property with the house on it. They have been family friends with the carriers for a number of years, and the carriers expressed an interest in acquiring the property. And its value really involves the fact that when you take the house down, you have three building lots there. If you, and I know the pictures have been submitted, whether or not the commissioner's had an opportunity to look at this, but there's numerous pictures in the file that we've provided, which was done as an assessment by Mike Carrier and his company. And, and basically what that assessment showed was that the, the property is in serious disrepair. The foundation leaks water. It needs to be either repaired or replaced. The, the furnace that's located in the basement is absolutely of no value. It has to be replaced. The hot water heater has to be replaced. All of the plumbing in the house has to be replaced. The plumbing has lead joints to it, which are not compliant with the code right now. All of that plumbing would have to be stripped outside, out of the house and replaced. The electrical system is a knob and tube electrical system, which is not code compliant. That all of that wiring has to be stripped. The, the electrical service, which is not up to code, has to be replaced. All of those things are basically just structural problems with the house. In addition to that, because the house was built in 1900, it is not code compliant in terms of the width of the stairs going into the second floor. The staircase is narrow. The staircase does not have a railing that is suitable for today's code. All of that has to be repaired and replaced. When you're replacing the water, the electrical, the interior walls are going to have to come down. The house is going, lacks insulation. It has to be insulated. It needs new siding. The pictures will depict that there's a serious amount of rot. I went out to the site, a serious amount of rot in that siding. And it's been my experience that once you start peeling the layers of this onion apart, you're going to see that every time you take something down, something else is wrong. I think human nature tells us that. The roof needs to be replaced, and all of the windows and doors need to be replaced. So when you're talking about the rehabilitation of this property, you're talking about a number that's in excess of $400,000. The fair market value of this property as it sits is about $350,000. They could not find somebody willing to make that investment or take that chance because the cost was exorbitant. So from a rehabilitation standpoint, it does not appear that this house can be saved. And the value to this property really lies in the land and not in the house. As part of the package, we submitted a letter from the state of Connecticut because we were made aware of the, of the report that was filed and the historical findings that were included in that report. And back in 2013, the, the family received a letter from the state of Connecticut that basically indicated that they were writing to inform them that the John Nebs Farmstead located at 34 West District Road was listed on the State Register of Historic Places by the Connecticut Historic Preservation Council. The State Register of Historic Places is an honorary designation established by general statutes. Although the designation does not prevent a property owner from demolishing the structure, the state register guides local officials, agencies, and the general public in identifying these types of properties. So from, from the get-go, they are aware of the fact that they were putting this house on a historic list. But as time goes on, the, the rehabilitation of this house becomes less and less likely. Again, we're talking about a house that's in excess of 123 years old. Just, and everything has a useful life, whether we like it or not. And as time goes on, some of these, these things can be saved, some of them cannot. So in, in our opinion, in Mike Carrier's opinion as a professional, this house cannot be rehabilitated. So I want to bring Mike up, at least to talk about the condition of the house a little bit more, so you can get another picture in your mind of what's involved in the rehabilitation of this property. And then I, I'm going to have one of the family members come up as well to inform you from their personal perspective, what they've done to try to market this property and save it, since it's, it is a sentimental, has sentimental value to them. It's just not realistic at this point. So, Mr. Carrier, if you could come up?
Good evening. My name is Mike Carrier. I am a representative of Carrier Holdings. I'm also owner and founder of Somac Property Management. We do, we do specialize in property maintenance and management. So that's where my background comes in as far as the rehabilitation goes. I did perform an inspection on the property. This photos, the photos you see now are of that inspection. Just touring the outside of the property, there was a lot of wood rot in the fascia, under the eaves, around windows, all potential leak points, even in, in modern buildings, but certainly in a building, you know, over 120 years old. Some of those leaks, which we, we believe those to be caused by water getting in and around those components, the eaves, the roof, the windows. Some of those leaks were actually apparent inside the unit, on the ceiling of second floor bedrooms, which tells us that there's probably a larger issue going on structural-wise as far as the, the roof is concerned. Basically, nothing on the exterior can be salvaged. And part of this home was also renovated. They did an addition onto the house, so the whole house is not from that era. There's about a third, if you stop at that photo right there, the top left-hand side, that whole right side of the house, where that window is all, is all basically newer, you know, so it's not era from that time. Then, you know, when you go inside the house, there is settling issues. So again, just kind of starting from the foundation up. So the foundation itself, being stone, does have some leak points. The, and in the basement itself, there is some temporary shoring in a number of locations indicative of, you know, possibly these houses did settle over time. So that was a way to address the settling. And then as you kind of walk through the house, the, I think Attorney Iogus touched on the knob and tube wiring, the lead components in the plumbing, and also the railing, like this staircase, not enough, you know, not up to today's width code. And certainly, I believe it's steeper than what code would allow us to do today. So kind of not really conducive to a full renovation. Very few closets, you know, as far as what somebody buying a home today would expect in, in a house. And, and then, you know, the plaster is showing its, its years. So I believe part of the house was horsehair and plaster, and there's cracks. And some of these photos do show, you know, in some of the closets, they do show the extensive cracking. And, you know, as far as just the, the overall, you know, it's not one issue. It's, it's one issue followed by another issue, just that, that makes this home, you know, not, it's not feasible to renovate. I should also add that having been friends with the Rosbaysons for probably 25 years now, you know, this home, if, did actually hold some sentimental value for me, and I did speak to the family about that early on, that, you know, if we could save the house, it certainly was our first choice. I've had a couple of good meals cooked by the, you know, not on Papa Joe, so they were the owners of the house. And so that, you know, also I take that into account when we're talking about demolishing the house. And as sad as that is to see the house go, you know, the house did raise, you know, many generations. I mean, it has fulfilled its life and then some as far as what we would expect a home of that era to provide. I don't know if the commission has any questions or?
Yeah, I think we'll hold those for the end, but thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Barbara, Kathleen, I'm sorry. Kathleen is, is one of the family members, and she's the spokesperson for the family. I'd like her to come up and address the commission with respect to some of the efforts that they've made to try to preserve the house. And Kathleen.
Good evening. So it's Kathleen Rosby's a new houser. And I am one of the executors of the will for this property. Really not until we started taking the furniture out, did we realize how extensive some of the damage was. The wallpaper in the living room, the whole entire bottom half of the window, the plaster's gone. It's like all crumbled out. It's, excuse me. Most of the walls in the living room are crumbling from water damage. We had three real estate agents come and look at it. Their major concern was the knob and tubing. The cellar has no typical beams for the floor. Lolly columns were put in to turn and crank to keep the first floor level. And that's what's in the basement. And we were told that that would not fly with a mortgage with an inspection because they're not, they're not even on the floor, like drilled in. So we used to crank them to tighten the floor. It is sentimental. We all were raised there. Like I said, until we took stuff out and really looked at with the realtor, the rot from the windows, the rain from the roof, there's a spot this big, the ceiling in the upstairs bedroom's falling. It's, nothing has been done probably in 50 years to that, to the house. My parents were older, and I, none of us, I believe, realized the neglect that it actually happened. The addition that was put on about 29 years ago, 30 years ago, that whole floor is, all the tiles, the whole floor has shifted. Every tile on one whole corner is off, correct, broken. Outside wood is rotted. Like I said, we had three realtors come in. We had one gentleman look at it, and he said, I can't afford to put the money into this house. The kitchen, if you walk in the kitchen, it's a sink. There's no cabinets. There's nothing. We grew up with cabinets that moved around. So there's no kitchen. It has a sink in it. And that's, but you know, if we could have kept it and someone bought it, that was our first option. It was a first op for us as family to buy it. We can't afford to. We can't afford to put the money into it. So this, right now, is what our final decision was.
In, in addition to those comments, I would tell the, the commission that this property is contained on the Farmington Library's list of historic homes. It is not on the Unionville List of Historic Properties. It is not on the Farmington, is not in the Farmington Historic District or on their list of historic properties. So it is, it is jurisdictionally before you, as it should be. But it is not a historic home in terms of the National Historic Register. And that's, I think, important. The, again, the value of this property lies in the fact that you can subdivide into three lots and, and, and the family can get some, some monetary gain from that, which is, which is certainly an expectation that they have, and I don't blame them. But to, but to try to rehab this house is, is, is not possible. As much as you, you know, we'd all like to think that these things are worth preserving. And in many, in many cases, they are, depending upon the, the structure. But in this case, we would submit to the commission that that is not appropriate in this particular instance. So that is the first portion of the special permit request. And I don't know if you want to address that part of it now, or whether you want us to continue with the whole thing and then address it.
I think it's fine to continue. Unless anybody disagrees, continue, and then we'll, we'll hold our questions for the end. Thank you.
Thank you. The second part of the application or the special permit basically involves the, the Farmington regulation that says that the R30 Zone will allow up to 2,400 square feet plus garages for a total livable space of 3,200 square feet, which would include the house and the garage. We've requested a waiver of that. Our intention is to increase the house size, not more than 2,700 square feet, so an additional 300 feet. As you look at the house that we're proposing, this house will fit into the neighborhood in terms of the way that you view it from the street. So when you're looking at the house from the curb, you will see a house that is, it would, it would show at 2,200 square feet. However, to the rear of the house, we've added two bump outs, one in the family room and one in the master bedroom. And those bump outs has contributed approximately 275 additional feet. Again, it's not something that you would see from the street. In reviewing the regulation, we took the opportunity to, to conduct the survey through the assessor's office as to whether or not this house would be in keeping with other properties in the neighborhood. And I, I did the research. I, I took the opportunity to go out and look at these houses. I spent some time on West District this past week. We found that there are four houses within 1,000 feet of this, which are in excess of that 2,400 square foot limit. I'm, I'm looking at 16 Red Coat Lane. It's 20, it's just over 2,400 square feet. I have the listing from the assessor's office here. I'm looking at the property located at 9 West District Road, which is just down the street from this, more towards the intersection of Plainville Avenue. That home is at 2,845 square feet. It's got a garage of 744 square feet for a total of 3,589. Again, this information comes from the assessors. I do have copies, which I'm going to submit for you. The third home that I'm looking at is 6 Pine Tree Schilling. That house, that house is 2,632 square feet, 484 foot garage, total of 3,116. And then finally, 17 West District Road, again, not far from the proposed homestead. Now that house is 2,682 square feet and a garage of 576 for a total of 3,258. So I, I just want to submit these for the record, just so the commission has a flavor for what's in the neighborhood. Admittedly, there are a number of homes, obviously, that are, are smaller than that as well. But it is a mixed development in terms of the size of these buildings. And I think from the design and from the reputation of the Carrier family, you're going to see quality-built, very attractive homes located on this street, which I think will enhance the property values for all of them. So I want to submit these to the as I indicated to you previously, the bump outs, the rear of the buildings, they're 132 square feet per floor, 264 square feet. So on top of the 2,400, that's where the additional square footage comes from. Again, this is from a marketing standpoint, the, the family has to consider the, the cost of the acquisition of the property, which is significant for, for three lots in, in Farmington. And then the, the price point for the houses in, in order to meet the market and the demands of the market. And again, these, these houses are, are subject to change, not more than 2,700 square feet. Some of them may come in smaller, depending upon whether or not a family needs a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom. But the maximum limit would be 2,700 square feet. And the total aggregate, I think, is just slightly over 3,500. Am I correct in that, Shannon?
The suggestion was, I believe, the, the total aggregate of the footprints we're looking at are less than they're at. They're just at 3,200.
Okay.
But the thought was to increase the 2,400 to 27 and the 32 to 35. So there is room in the garage if needed, if someone wanted to expand the garage.
Yeah. And, and these are basically two-car garages. I would think theoretically that if you built a 2,400 square foot, you could, you could get to the 3,200 by adding a third garage, and you, and you would beef up the, the, the total. That's not what the intention here is. The intention here is a two-car garage and, and to make it with more livable space than garage space. So that's, that's where we're at as far as the special permit is concerned. The third aspect of this application basically is just a straight subdivision. Do we meet the subdivision regulations for the Town of Farmington? Brian Panico is our engineer. He's here. He's going to discuss this. I would recognize that the plans have been reviewed on two occasions by the town. We've submitted revised plans. I think we're in conformance and have, have fulfilled their questions with respect to the, the proposed subdivision. The city sewer and city water does exist on the street. And I'll let Brian talk about that, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. For the record, Brian Panico with Cole Civil Survey. So yes, as attorney mentioned, we do have a three lot subdivision. These is R30 Zone. So just to the west of this is R20. This parcel is R30. So we have a 30,000 square foot minimum requirement. All of these lots are just over 30,000 square feet. And in, from what you could see on the GIS imagery before, these are kind of long linear lots, just like kind of the rest of the neighborhood. So from a planning perspective, when you think about that, originally, this was probably looked at, that this would be what that would look like for the rest of the neighborhood, was just one larger parcel. So now we're essentially splitting it up. There is city sewer and city water in West District Road, which we are proposing to connect to. The other thing is on this parcel, there are two yard drains which connect to the storm sewer system on either, on the west and east side of the property, what is effectively going to be in front of Lot 1 and in front of Lot 3. We are proposing to add a third yard drain in the front of Lot 2. And then to handle all, any of the storm drainage that may be a result of these houses, be it a little, be it some additional impervious surface, we are actually proposing roof leeder infiltration systems that will basically make up the difference for the roof, the, of all of the houses, the impervious surface for all three houses. So each one of those, at the time that the carriers have a final set plot plan. So as Attorney I was mentioned, if somebody wants a three-bedroom and those bump outs change, at the time of the plot plan, we do another design on that roof leeder infiltration system, or to take into account the exact size of the roof. And then the overflow to that would go to those yard drains which connect to the town's storm drainage system, so that we can mitigate and prevent any runoff to any, any of the other neighboring properties through that design. As far as the yards setback go, from what we're showing here, there's a 40-foot front yard. Currently, the current house is actually non-conforming. It sticks out over that. It's probably about, the front porch is probably about 25 to 30 feet away, and the main portion of the house is 30 to 35 feet away. So all these houses are setback 40 to 42 feet or so off the street. 15-foot side yards are what's required. The boxes are those footprints that Attorney I was said just shown. And we're showing those are all at about 30 feet off of the side yards with 168 to 170-foot backyards from the back of the house to that rear property line. So again, you know, very similar, very much like all of the neighboring properties. So we feel as though, given all of these circumstances, you know, this is a conventional subdivision meets the zoning regulations, R30 Zone. And again, is probably is the best and highest use for, for these parcels. So if there's anything additionally, I think we Um so if there's anything additionally, I think we touched on just about everything.
Couple more comments and we'll be done. Uh there's just uh three other things I'd like to add regarding the subdivision, and these were comments that uh. Uh Bruce and Shannon had posed to us, and I wanted to make sure that they're on the record. Uh the the sidewalk in front of uh uh the property uh is in is in disrepair. Uh by the time you add three driveways and then you cut the sidewalk to add sewer and water, uh it's going to require that the sidewalk be replaced and and we're certainly in agreement with that. Um the second thing is that there's a stone wall uh in certain portions of the property. Uh the uh. The applicant, the owner, uh the stone walls are going to stay where they are. We're not going to move those at all. Uh and the third thing uh was a little more difficult because it there's a wire fence that surrounds the property. And evidently, the fence was was put in without a surveyor. So as we surveyed the property, we found that some of the fences on our property. Some of the fences not on our property, uh to the extent that the neighbors will allow us to. Uh we will go on their property and uh and remove the fence to the extent that they don't want us to. Uh it's it's out of our hands. We will re- we will remove all the fencing on our property for sure. Uh it's just one of those things back then. You know, people put up fences and they worried about it later. So that's the way, that's the way it develops. In the final analysis, um those are the uh, that's the presentation. I know it's a lot, uh and I know there's people here uh who want to speak. Uh we certainly want to hear them and uh we'll answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, turning it over to commissioners. Matt?
Uh in the literature provided, uh there was mention of a shed that had some historical importance. What's the plan with the shed?
It it's not gonna, it's gonna be demolished.
Okay, the same as the house. Okay, um. Yeah, that's all I have right now.
Bobby?
Um yeah, I had the same question on the shed, if it was going to be uh preserved or not. Uh I noticed on the. Depiction of the house that you're planning on putting up. Um it's pretty much the same color scheme of the. House that's there now, the existing house, was that done on purpose to kind of like pay homage to the farmhouse and kind of like?
No.
Make it blend or was that just?
I think it was a black and white photo and that's what we ended up with, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Um because, you know, you you get a consumer out there who's going to pay a lot of money to have a house built. You know, in in all likelihood, you got to let them pick the color, you know. I I don't believe that it, you know, we can certainly control certain things in terms of, you know. Uh white or or gray or things of that nature, but uh I would hope that we wouldn't put restrictions on the colors of the house.
Just curious, that's all.
That's okay.
Um and then as far as the wire fence goes, um so that is coming down. Because of a safety hazard or because it's on somebody else's property or just for aesthetics or?
You know, it wa- it was a comment from the town uh asking us to take it down and and we didn't object to it. I mean, it's 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 fairly unsightly in terms of, you know, like like I said, I was out there. Um but again, some of it is is ours. The whole fence may be ours. It's just not on our property. Uh so to the extent that we can uh take it down, we would certainly consult with the neighbors and ask for permission. Uh and it should come down fairly easy based upon what I saw.
Okay, and then you are keeping the stone wall up.
Stone walls are going to stay.
I know the area because that's where uh that's in the area that me and my wife used to walk when we bought our first house. So uh I know the area very well and I'm I'm glad you're cleaning it up. Um you know, when it comes to houses and old houses, in your opinion, is it a safety hazard if we do nothing with the house?
As far as Mike, come up here and.
So if we were to try and preserve it.
Yeah.
For example, and we all know it's going to cost a lot of money. If the financial means aren't there to salvage it or preserve it, is it a safety hazard?
Uh it is. So if anybody's living in the house, the electrical system and plumbing alone uh would be cause for concern.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Bobby. Dave?
Um sure. Actually, sure. Some concern about the barns. We said shed, but they're fairly substantial, they're right.
The the, yeah, the the barns are, yeah, again, in 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 disrepair and unstable, uh but they're there.
Uh I guess my other big question is why is it necessary for the extra three hundred square feet?
Marketability, um because the we find that the the market. I I don't know, demand is the right word, but the market suggests that you need to have the flexibility uh to to have a house of that size, particularly. Uh admittedly, in a town like Farmington where the prices are a little higher, uh people want as much bang for their buck as they can get. And sometimes the square footage is is vitally important. Um if I just might digress for one other. There there is no air conditioning in this other house. And in in the price point that you're talking about after repairs without air conditioning. Uh again, it's 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 makes it very, very unmarketable.
Good day. Bruce?
Yeah, um I'd like to go go back to uh the barns a bit. I know we talked a fair bit about the house and uh, uh you know, I think it's uh. You know, kind of heartbreaking that it's in the condition that it's in and, you know, I think you've uh. You you've done some diligence there, but I I don't think we've talked about the barn enough. When I read the um. Uh historic inventory, uh I think there were two reports in there and they had condition reports. And they had identified, you know, you know, they they had a scale the way they ranged from four. They had like excellent, good, uh fair and deteriorated. Yeah, and they weren't deteriorated. They they weren't even fair. They they listed those things as good and these are people who are. Used to looking at these things. So could you comment a little bit more about? Why there isn't a way we can do some development on this property and maybe keep some or part of the barns? Uh as well as that that shed could be, it looked like it was right in the middle of the third lot, right at the back. Why why does it have to go as well? I think, could we not make some effort to save some of these uh factors here and and do something? Uh w- with these, you know, and I understand, you know, you you you've got um, you know, a business paradigm to deal with. Uh and you know, the house is 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 maybe overwhelming, but when I looked at the pictures of the barn, the interior, the wood. Looks solid. It's getting these good ratings. Could you comment on that a bit?
Yes, I I will. Uh the shed is directly behind the house, al- almost on the property line to the uh. To the to the rear of the property. Yeah, there it is, Shannon. Thank you. Okay. Uh whether or not it's conforming in terms of setback, I'm not even sure. Um but. Uh there. The report that you're referring to, Commissioner, is dated nineteen eighty three. Lot of time has elapsed since then and and over the ensuing forty years, the condition of this property has deteriorated significantly. So. What you what you're reading uh is is a retrospective. It's not, it's not accurate in terms of what's there today. Uh to the extent that we could save uh the shed in the back, it's certainly possible. Um of what value it has, I I I I think it's ind- uh indeterminate. Um the problem with the barn is that it encroaches upon the two lots. Uh it overlaps it, so you you end up losing a lot. And again, the 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 land is the value. Uh you can't, you can't build only one house on this lot and get your money back. Uh it just doesn't work. Uh but again, I I the most important thing is that report is.
Is old.
Forty something years old.
Did you, did you play with any scenarios and things like that where you where you where you could? Because it. You you know, in reading them here, it looks like you went fairly quickly to like really the only way to to do this is is just demolish everything and I I want to make sure that. We as a commission do due diligence to look at those historic protection factors and not not um not trade that off so quickly.
Yeah, I I would like to think that we did, uh and the reason I say that is because. Uh the family did make efforts to to try to save the property with the house in its current condition, uh with the hope of of rehabilitating it. Uh they've talked to numerous real estate people. Uh we we had Mike Carey go out there and examine the the property to see whether or not uh you could save it. Um and and it just was the professional opinion uh and the family's opinion that that just could not be done in this particular instance, given the ensuing forty something years that's transpired since that report was done. Thank you, sir.
Mike?
Um is, I'm assuming this property, it's a has a leaching septic, leaching field septic?
Yeah, it will be city sewer, city water.
My only question is, um with the lead choice, did you or?
Joints in the pipes.
Yeah, is there any, are there any environmental concerns with um the history behind that, the years of the lead going into the septic system?
Yeah, we we don't know the answer to that. You you do do need a demolition permit in order to make that happen. Uh and I think those types of analysis will be done.
Okay.
And the system will have to be abandoned.
Okay. No further questions for me?
Okay. When when did it go on city sewer, your own?
One thirty. The sewers came down, my parents looked up.
Okay.
Okay.
So. I stand, so that system's been out of use for a number of years then. Stand corrected.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Kyla, any questions?
Sure, yeah, just.
Sure.
Uh no, sorry, no questions. It, I was trying to find the unmute button.
Thanks, Kyla.
So the shed that's down back on that, that would be the middle lot, that actually was redone, that shed's probably about fifteen years old. So that's, that's just a brand new shed. Um with the with the barn, I know my sister fell through the floor. And one of the floors, um when we were showing the house, having the real estate agent, the floors were so bad that they wouldn't even let anybody go in. You know, you've got concrete that has uplifted. Their their concrete's standing up that far into three of the barn floors. Um there's not a window in it. Like I said, it's it's rotten. Foundation is built on stone. And the addition to that house, which I meant to mention, is on pillars. There's no foundation under it, so the new foundation would have to go under that addition. Because the bathroom in that room freezes every winter. There's no insulation, no foundation. Hi, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, so actually for Shannon, can you clarify, I know we've got historic district and this is a historic property, like. What some of those differences are?
So sure. Um for Farmington, we have a, we have the Unionville Historic District and the Farmington Historic District. The properties are added to historic district voluntarily. So we have a number of properties in town where a historic inventory has done. Those inventories were done in the eighties, as Attorney Diogas mentioned. And those inventories, it was a a state and federal program to come through and inventory. Homes of interest, whether it's from the architectural character or the individuals who. Built the homes or resided in the homes. So it's actually, they're quite interesting read and the links are on the um our Farmington Library's website for all of the inventories. Not every home in Farmington that has an inventory is in the district. Again, the. Um placement of one's property and home into a district is voluntary and there's a process to do so. The uh Rus Basin home was never put into a district. They did not pursue that at any point in time. So at this point then, um there is nothing to discuss directly with the Farmington or Unionville Historic District. As part of the regulation in two thousand eighteen, in December of two thousand eighteen, uh at that point, uh the town planner was uh Bill Warner. And Mr. Warner created the regulation, that article for section fifteen. Uh that is the consideration for the protection of historic factors. And that was um. Precipitated by, um we had had a few instances where buildings of. Historic interest. Were uh had come through from town plan and zoning and then building permit comes and demolition. And when uh the demolition triggers a different set of notification. For any home that's uh any building or structure that's greater than seventy five years old, then notification is done to. Our town historian, the chairs of both historic districts, the Unionville uh Museum and the Farmington Historic uh Society. That's done in an opportunity and there's a thirty day notification that has to be published in the newspaper. That's done as an opportunity, if someone is interested and there's funding, to dismantle. The building rather than demolish the building or go in and preserve various aspects. It is not in place to prevent. It's just a pause to allow that to happen. As part of that. Occurring, it came to light that there's a, you know, this had already gone through TPZ. It had all its approvals, this project back in twenty eighteen. So Mr. Warner thought it was prudent to add this into the plan and zoning process. So that it had an opportunity for a public voice with the commission. And make sure that the conditions or any opportunity, so the conditions of the buildings could be evaluated sooner than. At the demo permit stage and that um if there are opportunities for salvage of. Partial hole, et cetera, it provided that opportunity for the dialogue earlier in the process than. After TPZ and all the land use permits had been completed and we're now at the demolition phase. So it's an opportunity to do just what we've heard this evening with respect to a full conditions report. Um with respect to the the buildings. Is that helpful?
It is. Thanks, Shannon.
And and Mr. Chairman, if I might, just for the sake of clarity, I have a list of uh two two maps. One is the. Unionville Historic District and the other one is the Farmington Historic District with a listing of the homes that are located in Unionville. I just want to submit it for the record.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
Before we turn it over to the public. So you mentioned some houses in the area that you think are comparable size. When I look at. What's provided in the addenda review and the more immediate neighborhood to these potential houses. It looks like what you're proposing is about a thousand square feet bigger than many of those houses. Is that accurate? Am I reading that?
You know, I didn't, uh I think the the regulation said within a thousand feet, so I limited my inquiry into a thousand feet from our property lines. So if those houses are closer than a thousand feet, you 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 could well be right.
Okay.
Um but in accordance with the regulation, the houses I provided were also within a thousand.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll turn it over to the public now. We'll start with folks that are uh in the room. So if you're interested in speaking for or against this application, we ask you to come up to the. To the podium, state your name and your address. Come on up.
Good evening. Gerald Hancock, Five Westview Terrace. Owner and an adjoining property owner on the back uh lot of the three lots. And. Some of the comments made have clarified some of my questions, so I'll be brief in that regard. I just want to say that we have enjoyed our time as neighbors with the Rus Basins, both the children and Joe and Lee. We've been there since eighty two. We've had a great experience with them. We look forward to having a a nice. Uh friendly neighborhood uh relationship with the new residents that will be purchasing these houses. Uh the fence. Is not an issue with us. A lot of it is on our back property. They may go on the property to remove it. It was affectionately a fence that kept some of their previous farm animals in and uh we never had a problem with it. And Bailey, the horse, uh would come over and we would feed him apples. That's an anecdote, but uh. The barn, the shed that you're referring to on the back lot. Of our, one of our lots, one of our lines is the next lot two where the shed is. That was Bailey's new barn. And it never imposed on us, but I do have a question on the setback of twenty five feet, I think, was a uh engineer's note. To specify that the back property lots, the three, have a twenty five foot setback coming from the property line, which is of our adjoining line back. And that barn would not be in, that it's it's within pi feet of the of the line. So we don't have a problem. Uh we have resigned ourselves to the. Reminesses of historical value for homes. We. Our druthers would have been to see everything there with farm animals and a new, nice family that would occupy it. And keeping the barn, the red barn, and the shed, but, you know, in deference to the family, they've done their due diligence. They really have tried to make that happen. And uh we accept that. We accept it on their behalf, on, I would hope, the neighborhood's behalf. The the design of the house was the first time I saw it. We. The, the design of the house was the first time I saw it. We don't face the front west district. We're on the Westview cul-de-sac. So it's kind of a moot question for our view, but I do respect perhaps some of our neighbors due to the size and the style, but I think with carriers' quality work and the effort they put into making use of the land, we, we're just look, we, we resigned and we're, I guess we'll say we're happy to see that they're going to be quality homes there. We have a, a view that is back from the property, so we'll be viewing their yards. And I'm glad the stone wall, because that's a historical heritage to the town. And thank you for putting that on the plans and we, and remaining with it. I do have one question. So I'd mentioned the twenty-five foot setback. If you could clarify that, please. That from that back property line of the three lots, will there be twenty-five feet before, say, you know, the law, the lawns or the yards begin or part of it, just, just as a clarification, please? The other thing that I have on the town engineer, town engineering review plans is you do have an address, the drainage issues, but there was one specific, specific comment, and I can cite where that is on the plan review, indicating that they would like to see the sump pumps connected to the town of Farmington drainage. And I believe that's a valuable thing to have done. I think that, I'm not speaking for the engineer's office, but I think they would concur with that. As I think it came from their review to look at the feasibility of that. And the reason for that is homeowners, when they have sump pumps, they generally take a hose and they run it back somewhere on the property. And that would cause some other drainage, I, I think, around their houses and perhaps lead some of the water to our, the, all of the back lots. And we have the, primarily the whole entire back lot drainage. And it, I don't think it's a problem for us, although anecdotally, Lee did not like that I kind of made some berms there and the water would collect on their property. So if I might just reiterate and say, as far as the red barn goes, the last thing before I reiterate, but as far as the red barn goes, yes, I've looked at the historical listing of it. They described the type of barn and everything. I think since it cannot be saved with the way the use of the land, the value of the land is, it would be nice, I'm not saying this can happen, but it would be nice, what it really belongs is disassembled and brought to Sturridge Village or something like that, but that's another whole gamut which I don't think is going to be feasible. Somebody would have to find that person to begin with. I hate to see it go. It's a great view for us. We've enjoyed it, whether you see it from the front when we walk on thirty-four west district in the front, or when we see it from the back of our side. I, I don't see any other way, though. As they said, it isn't really stable. If you walk by and if you went in to feed Bailey, which we did, we, many times, the, the children gave us, and Joe and Lee, their, their parents gave us permission to come in and talk. You could, just from visual sight, the barn needs a lot of work. So I don't, I hate to see barns in Unionville and Farmington go down. The land trust has a house now that had a barn and that's down, so that's no longer there, but can't stop it, I don't think. I, we, we'd like to see it, but we're resigned for the new beauty that the new developers will build. I think it's agreeable. So if you could just address the twenty-five foot setback and the, the sump pump, I would, I would ask to do that. And I'll just end at that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't we go through public comments and then respond to them together, please? Anyone else? Come on up.
Danica Culver, thirty-nine West District Road. I am here tonight with emotion and sentiment. The destruction of this home is a loss of a part of history in our neighborhood. With respect to the family, the disarray, they've made the best choice that they can if the property could not be saved. The Rose Basin kids all here tonight are my friends, family. So with that being said, my main concern is the square footage. I think it's totally in excess to the neighborhood, despite what this man had said about several houses in excess of square footage. Those, I know the houses, they've all been added on to. The average home in that area, and I think my audience can confirm, is two thousand square feet or less. There are several ranches, several raised ranches that are twelve to fifteen hundred square feet. This is going to just dwarf our houses with oversized McMansions. And it does nothing, I, I don't, everybody says your property values will go up. Well, I'm not moving, so I'm not worried about that right now. I'm worried about oversized houses. And I'm prepared to have to go get shade so I don't ever have to look out my front windows again. That's my first thing. The second thing is the drainage. It's a huge concern. That all is high water tables. You can see in the plans, the sump pumps are being installed at the time of the building, but where are they going to go? One of the neighbors has a swamp in her backyard every time it rains. Several of us do. We're already getting water table concerns from the building off of Copper Mine backing Whispering Rod. That whole neighborhood is doing the same. Now it's coming out onto West District. The third thing I wanted to mention was the Dr. Dunn barn, which is registered Connecticut Historical. It breaks my heart to see it come down. But if it's in the disarray that the family and the realtors have said, then we don't have much choice. We have to be safe in this world also, just to keep a building. And the shed in the back that you're all questioning, that's only been there fifteen, twenty years, I remember when they built it. And they put the red tin roof on it. And Joe would ask me to go out and have a little hutch with him in the barn, you know, we'd sneak off from the party. So we all have our memories and they're all good. But the biggest thing, and I think anybody else speaking tonight will agree with me, the size is just too much. And from looking at the plans, yes, it's a very nice looking home. I've seen other carrier homes. Yes, they build a nice home. But there are three soldiers in a row, all looking exactly alike. We're a neighborhood of Dutch Colonials, Colonials, ranches, raised ranches. It just doesn't fit in. I'm sorry. And I have one more question, which I don't even know what I'm asking about, but I've been poring over these plans on my computer for two weeks. What are ramps and domes in the front of your plans that refer to the wheelchairs?
It's the tactile warnings for the ADA ramps. So for sidewalks, where the sidewalk touches down and crest at a crosswalk, it's the tactile warning strip for an ADA ramp.
So the bumpy?
Yes.
Oh, those are awful.
It's required by law.
Oh, my God, they put them in Walmart and had to take them out. The poor wheelchair, their bags were falling off their wheelchair.
It's required by law.
That's crazy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Maria Sanchez Williams over at Six Westview Terrace. I'm actually at the end of the walking path in the Westview Terrace cul-de-sac. What I haven't heard yet was what the timeline was to build these three houses. Are we building as we sell? Is it going to be built and then cross our fingers that they sell? Because just like my neighbor previously has said, we love the carrier homes. I've, you know, had a carrier home. I've moved to Unionville for the sake of its individuality out of Farmington. We have a beautiful neighborhood that is of mixed houses and I do worry about it looking very dwarfed when we have these brand new builds in our neighborhood that all look identical, that will kind of, you know, trump. I love to bring value to our home and to the neighborhood by adding new builds, but not at the expense that they look like McMansions on tiny lots that we're looking at building them. So I'm more curious to know outside of just the size, because we've already addressed that, what the timeline was to build these three homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to speak for or against? Come on up.
Doris Philly in twenty-eight West District Road. I unfortunately am the person who's going to be most affected by this. I am to the left of the property. And I actually made some notes so I can concisely present my objection, but I would like to just respond to some things that were said. Regarding the barns, especially the beautiful red barn, the Dr. Dunn barn, I believe the family would agree that that barn was, a lot was redone to that several years ago, the roof and the painting. So somebody, you know, obviously felt there was some value to that. And now we're talking about it's totally useless. It wasn't, wasn't that long ago and it's beautiful, beautiful from my yard. So I just want to comment on that. They're talking about it being dilapidated, but it was fairly recently updated. The other thing I want to say is, I know you said that you've tried everything to try to preserve the property as a farm. And I don't want to offend the family, but I really wonder how Joe and Kathleen feel about it being sold to, as he said, the value of the land subdivide for monetary gain instead of retaining the, that, that farm was treasured to those people. I built my home, I bought the property nineteen seventy-one, so I've lived there for fifty years. And those two, they loved that property, their farm meant the life to them. And I just wonder how they'd feel about not trying to retain it. Now, I did hear that there was someone who was offering to purchase that land and keep it as a farm. And I would appreciate if you folks would look into that, because they keep saying that that there's nobody that's willing to do that, but we're all in the neighborhood are saying that we would love to see the preservation of that. And so somebody say that the plots were made such and such for development. They were the first ones there. They were the farmhouse. They were West District Road back in nineteen hundred when the Duns built that property. So I'd like to comment on that. Also, you keep talking about the rehabilitation of the property. Okay, so maybe the house itself is not able to just redo, but it could be rebuilt. It could be rebuilt to the actual designs of the farmhouse. And, and I'm sure there's somebody around, maybe not in town, but there's somebody somewhere who would love to rebuild that, bring their animals, their horses. My children, grandchildren grew up with, gosh, sheep, horses, chickens, goats, geese. I mean, it's, like I say, I've been here for fifty years and another thing I'd like to say too is I do hope that you don't make a decision for new construction to just majorly impact my life, my yard. He commented about, he found four houses within a thousand square feet that are thirty-seven hundred. Mine is sixteen. The people next to me are fifteen. We've got little ranches. The whole section, the circle around me, it's Mohawk. It's Unionville. It's all little ranches. It's nothing like the man put up there. And yes, it's going to dwarf us. We're very proud of our homes. We're very proud of what we have. You know, we don't have mansions. We're not rich. I live on my social security. I keep my house yard and my, my, you know, housing yard nice. So do all the people in this Unionville area around West District, Mohawk. It's just not fair to build something huge like that for monetary gain. So, yeah, okay. So also I want to say, he mentioned four places, but that is not the majority. He said, similar to neighboring properties, but please, gentlemen, drive in our neighborhood, come in my yard. I'd be happy to let you, you know, see what, what we have now versus what they're trying to impose on us. So then I'll go to my own notes. First of all, I, I say again that I, I would like you to find a way to retain the, the tradition of that. That's a Unionville landmark, certainly is. And what I'd like to give you is a little pertinent history of our adjoining properties, mine and thirty-four west district. So I purchased my land in nineteen seventy-one to build my house. And shortly after I built the house, in nineteen seventy-two, I had a contractor who was going to put, Chris, the foundation in. He had the whole dug and he sent the contractor out to put in the footings, three feet of water, three or four feet of water. So he had to send a person out to pump it all out, pump it all out. Next day, the, the man's coming again with the, with the footings in, three feet of water again, very next day. They did that two or three times. They finally had to make the cement man sit and wait for it to be pumped out to put the footings. Then they had to go through the same thing with the foundation. After that, I was told that in nineteen fifty-five, the flood that you folks had, I used to live in Southington, I grew up in Connecticut, that the flood of nineteen fifty-five changed the water table. And my land and the field right next to me are called wetlands. I've lived with that for fifty years. And if I knew it was a wetland, I would not have purchased it, I'll tell you that. And I've been, like I said, I've been dealing with that problem for fifty years. I have, I'll show you some pictures, which I'm going to, I'm going to.
Ms. Philly, you're at six minutes and the chair did.
Talked a lot about, I mean, I'm, I would.
I've, I've been timing, well, that's at the chair's discretion. He said five minutes, you're at six, and I've been timing everyone that spoke.
Extra time, seeing as I'm mainly impose, you know, impose this on me.
A little bit of.
Sure, no, I don't need that much more. I've got two pictures, which I'm going to show you, that because the water table is so high, every time it rains, my backyard, these are a couple of different seasons, you can see trees, no trees. Every time, it's just, just rain, not like a monsoon. Anytime there's a heavy amount of rain, my backyard immediately fills with water because there is, the water table is so high, it's got nowhere to go. I've got two sump pumps. I've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on waterproofing. I still get water in my basement. My main thing is if you allow them to put a house in the field next to it, that's going to put a dam basically, a cement dam, which is going to throw more water onto my property. And the lady next door, she has, she has water already. She said to me, they do that to you, then yours is coming over here. So I'm just.
Do you not have a for sale sign on your house? I did drive by.
Pardon me?
Are you, are you not selling your property? I thought.
No, that's a trailer.
That's, that's for sale?
If the, if this house is for sale. I'm selling one of the trailers in my truck.
I see, I apologize then.
No, that's okay. People ask me that too. No, 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 I'm not. I built it. I'll stay there. But I'm just saying, you know, please, just please understand, I'm a fifty year resident. And if they want to put two houses, fine, but please just don't put a house in that field. The other thing is, they mentioned putting, connecting the sump pump to the town sewer. When I've had my basement waterproofed and waterproofing done, they, they all say it's against the law. You aren't allowed to, to connect that into the town, town drainage system. They said you have to put it out on your yard. So I'm just asking, I'm done, I'm going to present these for evidence. I'm just asking you to please respect the fact that I've lived there for fifty years. I don't want to look at this monstrosity with the bumps and stuff that he's talking about, because they're going to be directly to me. And if you can reserve the farm, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, appreciate your time.
Come on.
Again, Gerald Hancock, back lot adjoining neighbor. I just wanted to point out, there was one slide that did show some of the foliage in the back lot area, lot two and lot three perhaps, which is the far left one. There are some decaying trees along that property line. And they don't really offer too much of a aesthetic appearance or, or blockage of scenery view. And some of the trees extend over into the back lot of three and two, and they create an overhang. You can see the pictures there of the bigger trees in the back, but they, some, some are not fully on that property line in the back. Some may be the other adjoining maybe too. But what I'm saying is the back property line, some of them are decaying. And I didn't know if maybe during construction, they would maybe consider removing some of them or trimming some of them that look to be harmful due to either causing a falling hazard or cause debris. The overhang, well, I'm sure might create a little debris in the nicely new landscape lawns. So I think it would be valuable to consider if they would maybe make that something as an after fact. That's all I want to. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Bussell, 7 West View Terrace, I'm Jerry's next door neighbor. Uh, I just also wanted to state my concern about the size of the houses. Not as so much as square footage as the height of it. Being there's no basement, I'm sure you guys aren't putting a basement in because of the water table. So you've got three floors. I've plus a little bit of an attic above the third floor. And that's a good story higher than most houses in the neighborhood. And as to the water, um, I've lived there for over 25 years now, and I've never had water in my basement in the fall or winter. And I've been running a sun pump out to the street all winter long, just this year. So the water tables are shifting and changing around in the neighborhood. In fact, New Horizons was looking to put that development of the additional houses. I also bought their property in back and found out going to their meetings that the property behind me now has changed in the last 10 years to being wetlands. Um, and if anyone will stay here, anyone who's walked that path after a rainstorm, will see a, a nice river coming off the house on the other side of the path from their backyard, Maria's backyard. And it, it flows for a good day until after, after the rain stops. So there is a, a ton of groundwater in the neighborhood. I just want that to be taken into consideration when you're looking to, you know, change your impermeable surfaces and, and adding all these structures. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to address a couple of the questions, like keeping the place as a farm. There are no animals on that. That property was grandfathered in many years ago. I think Town Farmington's a five acre lot. So we had horses, we had cows, we had sheep. It had been there since the twenties. There are no animals. And when we were selling the house, we kept the animals there. A year after my mother died, my brother fed them every, twice a day. So we could possibly keep the animals and sell it as an attacked farm. There was no bites on it. And if there was, if someone offered something, it was barely $200,000 because of the work that they'd have to put in. So to maintain the farm, it's not going to happen. It will never be what it was. There's no animals. It's now, right now, not zoned for a farm.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kate Mitchell and I live at 24 West District Road, which is the, um, two houses to the left of lot one. So Ms. Phillyan is next to lot one, and then we are next to her. Once you see her pictures, um, of the lake that she gets in her yard every time it rains, we have a very high water table level. We do get water in our basement up from the bottom of the basement. Doesn't leak in windows or anything. Uh, the basement becomes wet from the ground up. Um, my concern is the lake that she has in her yard when it rains is now coming over to my yard more than, than what it is. I thought I read somewhere about, um, drainage being put towards 28 West District Road, which would be Ms. Phillyan's property, which would add more water to what she already has. And it'd be very interesting for you to view her pictures to see what she deals with. Um, and that's a big concern as well as these mini McMansions that are going in. It just doesn't go with the neighborhood. Like others were saying, and I just really wanted to voice that. But, but my main concern is the drainage. Um, because I do know that property has at least one, maybe two drains within the property, on the grounds of the property. So drainage is a huge concern which will affect our property. If, because they're talking about elevating the ground, I thought I read that as well. Elevating the whole ground, which means it goes up more and there's more drainage into her yard, which affects my yard, my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Gary Clover, I live at 39 West District Road. Across from the farm, right across from, uh, the New Horizons path there. And as far as the water goes, uh, I know, I used to know the guy that lived on 42 West District Road, which was right on the opposite side of the New Horizons path. And when I built that house, it's a raised ranch on a slab because they couldn't put a foundation in. He ended up putting a pool in the backyard. He ended up with a problem with an in-ground pool with water floating up and brewing his liner in the pool. And so I just say there's definitely water problems in that area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Shannon, we have anybody online?
Uh, there was, yes, there is a hand raised. And I just, as a reminder for me too, we did have a one written correspondence that we need to enter into the record once we have, um, all the speakers. So, um, Mr. Sanborn, you should be able to unmute your microphone and address the commission if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't attend. I was, I, I would really love to. So I live at 42 West District Road. It was, uh, Gary just, that was the property that Gary was just mentioning. I'm to the, so the way that you guys are looking at the, uh, the properties now, I'm right to the right of those, um, across that path there. Um, so, you know, same kind of concerns that everybody, you know, has been airing with the, you know, the sizes and all that kind of stuff. And, um, you know, I, I wrote a bunch of notes down and stuff that I had, and I, I'm just going to go over a few of them. If, if it's like stream of consciousness, I apologize. So I was just curious as to like what, you know, for variances and, and things like that. I know we've been kind of issuing a lot of those recently. You know, for different developments and things like that. And I don't know, you know, I understand it's, it's a money thing and it's a business aspect to things. But I just don't know where, you know, where we draw the line at some point, but, um, and, um, I, I noticed the, the carrier, I think it was like, I forgot who it was, the carrier, lawyer or one of the people was talking about how they kind of, you know, take care and concern and things like that. You know, their, their mockup of the house. They were saying, you know, it was kind of structured in a way to, you know, fit into a neighborhood and things like that. Um, so that leads me to believe that they're, you know, open to, you know, discuss things and, you know, you know, figure things out or whatever. So I, I was kind of happy to hear that. I believe the town engineer also mentioned, because another one of my worries, like everyone else around here, um, is, is water. So, um, they, the town engineer, I think it was mentioned, uh, you know, the pumps and things that they're putting in. And again, I, I, we all know how water works, like water goes where it goes and you can't really stop it. You can only hope to contain it, right? He mentioned mitigating and preventing water runoff to existing properties. Um, I'm just curious as to like, what, what happens if that doesn't happen? What happens if it's worse? And again, I've only been here since 2016, so I'm a fairly new resident. And, and the house property thing, the value thing, couldn't care less about it. I'm, I'm here for the next 50 years, so it doesn't really matter to me. Um, so you know, that's, that's, that's more of a concern to me is what's going to happen to my property? House value, that's, that's great. I, again, I couldn't care less. I want to know what's going to happen to my property. And if something does happen to my property, what sort of assurances do I have? Uh, you know, in a recent, and, and the only reason I'm a little, if I might sound a little scorned here, the only, I, there was a town, of, you know, okayed project to put new water pipes in here. And I have a, a stone wall that the previous owner had put in. And it's gorgeous stone wall, if anybody who's been in the, in the area, I mean, I wish I could take credit for it, but, um, and when they were putting the water pipes in, they were tampering down the asphalt. And I was home and it felt like an earthquake was going off in my house. And I look outside and I see that a part of my stone wall was like collapsed. So I went outside and started talking to people, going on like, oh, yeah, I noticed this. Um, I had correspondence with the town, correspondence with the company for months, um, to try to get them to like, you know, rectify the, the situation. Um, it was a lot of runaround. I had to like prove, I had to go, literally go on Google Earth and find old images. Luckily, thankfully, they were there from when I wasn't in the house and show them the difference of the stone wall, you know, the two stone walls. And then they kind of still just left me hanging and I emailed them and I was like, hey, so what's the deal? What's going on? And then they sent me an invoice and here, here, here's proof that work was done. And then I was, I was kind of like confused because it was like, oh, so you guys did work at my house and you didn't tell me? You didn't contact me, nobody like, and, and that's my only interaction with town-led projects or town-approved projects. So you know, excuse me if I'm a little, you know, uh, like I said, scorned or whatever, but, um, and I guess the other part, so I was looking up, um, you know, to talk to some of the points that the other people were talking about with, you know, the water changes here, because obviously they've been here a lot longer than I have. So they can speak to a lot of the changes that they've seen. Um, but in terms of like the regulations and uh, guidelines that we're using, um, I looked up, I found an article on, um, CT Insider. And I'll just quote this, so this is not my words, this is quoted directly from the article. Um, flooding in Connecticut is likely to get worse due to climate change. A newly updated model demonstrates extreme 100-year floods predicted by the National Oceanography and Atmospheric Administration are estimated to be more frequent. In some cases, a 100-year flood may occur as often as once a decade, according to a report released in late June. And this article was written in July 2023, so very recent. Um, the top 10 extreme one-day precipitation events have all occurred since 1995. Many experts say that NOAA's gold standard model for predicting precipitation, the Atlas 14, is out of date. Without accurate rainfall models, new roads, new bridges and houses could be built as if floodwater isn't expected. So again, I mean, the floodwaters are getting worse, the, you know, the groundwater is rising. And I just, I worry, and I'm the house that's on the slab, so I do not get water in my house. Thankfully, they, they, they built that, you know, like that. But I do get water in my yard. Steve was mentioning, I'm the one who has like the river that runs down the path here. So just like everyone's, you know, uh, concerns, I'm, I'm kind of mirroring the same ones. I, I don't have a problem with like, I understand, you know, construction's going to happen and all that stuff. I, you know, I believe the family that they did all their work. I, I completely am on board with that. So I'm not against development here or anything by any means. Um, I just want to make sure it's, makes sense, it's not frivolous. Um, at, you know, and it, and it takes into regard, obviously, the surrounding area and all of that stuff. And, and, and the history, obviously, a lot of the people spoke to that. Again, I'm, I'm a six-year resident here, so, but I do appreciate history. I mean, I voted yes on the 1926 building. So, you know, I, I do appreciate the town's history, even though it's not necessarily my town's history until, you know, recent years. But, um, I guess that's, sorry, that was stream of consciousness. Like I said, I was just talking to my element and I apologize if you didn't really pick up on anything I was saying. Um, but I think I covered everything I was, I was trying to, to cover. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if anyone else has called in to offer comment on 34 West District Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, one more time, if anyone else has called in to offer comment on the 34 West District Road subdivision application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, at this point, there's no other hands raised. If, um, you're in agreement, I'll enter into the record the written correspondence that we had received.
Please.
Okay. Uh, towards the end of last week, we received an email from, uh, Jay Bombara, uh, resident of 13 Mountain Road with the focus of Mr. Bombara's comments were the preservation of the home and the barns to the maximum extent practical. Uh, his full letter is here on the screen. And it was, been posted on the website and was included in the data that was provided to the commission members. So I wasn't going to read it in verbatim, but it is on the screen for the record.
Thank you.
Um, I also just want to make another quick question. You folks are probably aware, um, Kathleen said that, um, it's not a farm any longer. But I have a lot of legal expertise and it's been grandfathered as long as it was as a farm for that long. The people that come in can have it as a farm because it's called grandfathered. But you have on, um, page two of three under site development plan number 20B, review grading to the west of lot one, which is me. As it appears, filling is proposed along the shared property line and redirecting flow back onto the neighboring property at 28 West District. It sounds like you're trying to take some of their water and put it over, more water on me? Is that what this says? That's how I'm reading it. Redirecting flow back onto the neighboring property at 28 West District.
We'll have, we'll have the applicant respond. Thank you. You're up.
Sure it's that.
Okay. Shannon, how'd you do with the questions? Any better than I did?
No, it seems pretty good.
Pretty good? Okay, good.
So.
The, uh, there's, there's a couple of different questions that we'd, we'd like to address. The comments that they're referring to were the original comments that were submitted to us by the town after they reviewed our plans. We have submitted revised plans addressing those comments and making the changes of that the town, uh, had requested so that the water doesn't get directed onto that property. Brian will talk about that when he comes back up. He'll talk about the, the engineering aspects of this, which would be the, uh, the, uh, the sun pumps and the, uh, the discharge. So I'll, I'll leave that to him. The, uh, the, the rear setback line is, is, is nothing more than or less than a front setback line. It just is, it is the perimeter of the property in which you cannot build a house. Um, it, it doesn't mean that you can't plant grass there, plant trees there. Uh, in fact, I'm not even sure what the regulations allow for sheds in, in Farmington. Most, most towns allow sheds within five feet of your property line. So that shed is probably, uh, a legal shed as, as it's, as it stands. Uh, it, there's no intention to keep the shed there. So just, just so that, uh, we address that. As far as the trees are concerned, to the extent that they're diseased and they're on our property, we can address that. Um, but, but we're, we're not the insurance policy for the entire neighborhood in terms of taking care of every problem that, that exists out there. We want to be good neighbors. We want to address, uh, as many of these concerns as we can within reason. Uh, but we will look at those trees and see if we can trim them back, uh, and take care of some of those issues. Uh, that's certainly a, a fair thing for someone to ask and for us to do. The, um, the houses, and again, this was part of the danger of presenting a rendering of what a house could look like. Uh, because in the abstract, it looks like a monstrosity, well, when it's well within the building height restrictions of the town. It's, it's certainly that. And as I tried to point out when, in my original comments, the, the length, the width and the height of the house do not necessarily change if we go to 2,400 square feet. We can still build that same house. We just have to eliminate the little bump outs in the back of the yard so that if, if there's the conception that you're going to be seeing a different type of house because it's only 2,400 square feet, it, it's probably not realistic. You're still going to see the same type. Now, they're not going to be three white houses in a row, uh, as much as people like or don't like white. Um, but there are going to be three houses in a row. They're all going to be in compliance with the zoning regulations. And, and again, all we're trying to do is to show the feasibility that houses do fit on this property in terms of their design. We're not, there's no requirement that we're bound by what we showed you today. We're just showing you a feasibility and a rendering of what can be done out there. So I, I can't alleviate people's concerns in terms of monstrosities, but, uh, the, these houses are going to be pretty consistent with, with what a normal house, uh, there's a basement and there's two floors. And that, that's pretty standard. Uh, there's not, uh, there's not much difference, uh, from a colonial and, and, uh, from a Cape, uh, in, in terms of the height. Um, the basement is going to be full basements. Uh, they are going to have some pumps in them, uh, we think it's necessary. Um, and I'm going to have Brian come up and address some of those concerns. What else can I handle, uh, if you can remember, because I'm.
I don't know, so I think it's, it just, unless you want any other comment regarding the demolition, the others was the size of the house. Oh, timeline, construction?
Yeah, in, in terms of. Yeah, i- i- in terms of. What time do you have to be home? Oh, okay. Join the flow. The, the timeline for the construction uh, would be, you know, I, I would say in the next building season, provided the market, you know, again, we. If you told me the interest rates are gonna go to seven and a half percent, is it gonna affect the market? Of course it is. You know, we're at about six point one percent. We're hoping for a reduction in the next quarter. Uh, that, that could generate or stimulate uh. More development, but again, it's, it's market-driven to some, uh, in all, in, in most respects. Uh, but we, we would think that it would be fairly imminent, uh, given the current market conditions.
And built. They're not building three homes on spec.
No.
Yeah.
Ask the chairman. Well, you, you try not to build in the wintertime. You can't, you don't want to pour foundations in the wintertime, so usually when you get to December. Uh, you're, you're not gonna be building, you're not gonna be digging foundations, but if you have your foundations in the ground and people come along and want houses. You, you can build in the cold weather, so uh, you know, we're talking about the next six to twelve months. Uh, Brian, why don't you come up and do some of the uh, engineering aspects of this, okay?
Uh, record again, Brian Pannico, uh, Cole Civil Survey. Um, so a couple of points I want to touch on, the uh, sump pump connections. Uh, what we basically proposed is the two existing yard drains that are on the property. Connect to um, Town of Farmington Drainage System in West District Road. Um, because there are two on lots one and three, we can very easily connect roof leader infiltration, the roof leaders, um, sump pumps. Um, obviously, uh, like I said, we have to size and account for the roof runoff of these properties, what it would be different. From a proposed perspective than what it does and exist, how it exists now. Uh, the big caveat to that is we didn't sit there and say, okay, well, there, which I just did some quick math and some quick calculations just based on. Property field cards, survey map, stuff like that. The existing house is, and all of the actual structures there on the property is roughly. Twenty-eight hundred to three thousand square feet of footprint, so I'm not talking about the second floor or any multiple levels. I'm talking about just the. Surface footprint of all of these buildings. So the house, the barn, the shed uh, is about twenty-eight to three thousand square feet. And then there's give or take another fifteen hundred square feet of. Rather impervious surface, whether it be gravel driveway, driveway, concrete walks that surround the property, et cetera. So that's about. Four to five thousand square feet of existing impervious surface that is. Complementing the runoff speed to neighboring properties off property. Um, the total proposed impervious surface we have with the sixteen hundred square foot footprints as shown, plus. Give or take eight or eight hundred square feet of driveway, twenty-four hundred square feet per lot, seventy-two hundred square feet total. So we are increasing the impervious surface of the proposed design as you see it. From the existing by about two thousand square feet, let's say. However, we are designing. The roof leader infiltration systems solely based on the impervious surface of all of these new homes. We're not saying, well. Because there's already impervious surface there, we're just disregarding it. We don't actually need roof leader. Storage and we're just gonna let the storm water run off to the neighboring properties. Now, we're already accounting for that and figuring that out. We did submit. Uh, be it just today, so I know staff hasn't had time to review it, but a standard typical. Uh, based on this size house, based on conditions, this is roughly the size of the units that would need to be installed to store up to that hundred or storm. Level so we can make sure that we had enough storage uh, for the runoff. So that being said. Um, you know, going back to the comment about the size of the houses, you know, yes, they're a little bit larger, but granted, this. House, this barn, all these things on this site, as everybody's accustomed to, is substantially larger than. The standard, I guess, uh, that we're talking about. Um, Shannon, if you could bring up, if you don't mind, the just existing conditions plan?
Uh, sure. Do you need me to zoom in or is that good?
Uh, existing condition?
Uh, sorry, well, I gotta go on.
So currently, uh, and again, contributing to the thought process and. Hydrology of the site and when we talk about these things, this is the high point of the site and all of the water, so the house is also. So all of the water from this site either flows down this direction to a yard drain here, which connects to. Uh, West District Road.
Brian, can I ask, you're gonna have, I can, I can help here on the screen. Cause I've got a pretty good idea, um, but we're not picking, and we're not gonna pick any of that up on the mic for the recording, so.
Yep.
If you're gonna talk drainage pattern, just walk me through and I can help, cause I'm pretty familiar with it, cause I walked.
Yeah, so everything, um, and obviously you've been out there too, Shannon, so if something sounds off, you can certainly let me know. Uh, everything from the corner which Shannon is highlighting, um. It's gonna flow toward the house and then it basically breaks up and it either goes to the north or to the south around the house, behind the barn. Um, and back to a small yard drain in that area. Now, we are, i- it's unclear as to what the, you know, exact. Status and condition of that yard drain is. Um, it may need to be cleaned, maybe that's why water was pooling, maybe there were leaves covering it. That's why water pulled up and then ended up, um, you know, inundating that specific area. Uh, it's unclear, you're not gonna speculate, we're just gonna say that, obviously, when they construct these new homes and do all of this work, it's obviously going to be cleaned. And now we are gonna slightly change those drainage patterns by the positions of the house, adding another yard drain. And directing the water around these houses. The original plan, which we had, had, we didn't have. Uh, location on those two yard drains. We didn't know exactly where they were. We didn't actually even know that they existed, so we're looking at this thing. There's just this big low spot. Um, in this property, where is this water going? Additional investigation located these two yard drains. So the original plan had all three of these houses kind of up on a mound and all the water was coming or going. Off of that mound, either to the backyard or back to the street. Um, and so that was that original comment that some of that water could, could be getting diverted to the neighboring property. Uh, since then, we've modified these plans, added some swales basically between the properties to direct all of this water to these yard drains. In the, in an event to avoid any inundation of either these properties or the neighboring properties through the use of uh, those yard drains. Um, and again, with the roof leader systems and the. Kind of now more intentional directing of the water to these yard drains and the, and the grading of this. It should, in theory, help to kind of solve some of these issues of water running offsite. Um, again, this property in itself is essentially like a, a bowl. Um, the water would have to fill up this property substantially for it to actually then get to West District Road, so. It's, it's incorrect. Uh, uh, I am talking about surface water. Uh, we're talking about surface water in general, yes. Um. Again, which is the concern when we have these major uh, rainstorms, uh, that I believe the neighbors are talking about the water going. In their, filling up their backyards, and so that's what we're trying to avoid with this, through this design. Um. There is no evidence to us that this property is wetlands, um, was wetlands. It's not dictated on the map. Uh, town mapping, um, I'm not sure about the neighboring properties. It is certainly possible that the neighbor's property was built on wetlands. Um, I believe the applicant actually had said that forty-two used to have a pond on it, uh, skating pond on it. Um, so it certainly could have been filled back in the seventies to build a house and. That could be an area, that's obviously an area of high groundwater could contribute. Again, we're not here to speculate. We're here to just try to figure out. And make sure that what we're designing is the best possible solution, um, to, to work for this. So we do have some pumps designed. Uh, those, or sump pumps proposed, those sump pumps will discharge to the yard drains. Uh, which then discharge to West District Road, so we're not just dumping additional sump pump uh, discharge, you know, groundwater. To surface to then inundate neighboring properties. We're sending this to the town drainage system. Uh, we've done that on quite a few projects. It's pretty much the standard anywhere you can discharge to the town drainage system. That's obviously the goal. Um, and again, so to kind of summarize. Through the regrading of the site as a whole, the elimination of the houses, of the existing house and the barns and all of that. Regrading the whole site, providing the storage and the uh, input, in the, for the roof leaders. And then adding these yard drains and regrading the whole site, uh, we believe that we're not only going to. Uh, not have any water issues on this property, but it may in, in, end up actually benefiting the neighbors from water perspective as well.
Thank you.
And, and just to, to clarify, because there was a, a comment regarding the illegality of tying it to a sanitary sewer, that, that's not what, what happens in this case. We're not tying it to your sanitary sewer system. We're, we're tying it to your storm water system, so it's your catch basins. So that's how that's gonna be designed and implemented. Shannon, how did we do?
I think we got everything.
Okay.
I think we, we responded to all the questions that came up.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'd just like to make one comment. Um, it's not major rainstorms, it's any heavy rain. Um, but, so I want to ask the committee, um, they keep talking about the size of the house and the house that's there now. Um, yeah, it's one house now. Would the committee, I mean, I'm not sure. Why they think they need to put three houses. Would the committee ever maybe decide to put one house or two houses? Especially not a third house in that field, which I've already discussed. That's my first question. And the second question is, if they've got some sort of plans where they're gonna be draining, um, the groundwater. Into some town drain, well, please, I want to participate in that. I don't know if you've seen my pictures yet. But this happens every time there's rain. This isn't just like if we get like a huge storm. How do I, how do I connect into that? I mean, if they can, then I should be able to. They said they're gonna be connecting, you know, the water, because yeah, they, they put a grate in. They had a water problem. I don't know if they're wetlands. I know I'm wetlands, but they put a grate, an actual metal grate right up in the corner of our. Between me and them. I didn't know they had one on the other side, so they already have that, but if they're gonna be extended, I'd really like to participate in that, please. Get the water off of my property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we've got another hand raised, if you.
Okay, sure.
It's Mr. Sanborn again. Mr. Sanborn, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Yeah, I'm good. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I appreciate it. Um, I was just, um, to clarify, I know we said that all the questions were answered. I was. The gentleman who just spoke, um, he was talking about the water mitigation, uh. You know, strategies or techniques, whatever you wanna call those, uh, that they're using, and he mentioned that it might actually help the current water situation. And we were using like shoulds and coulds and, you know, woods and things like that, but um, is there any like? What if, what if it gets, what if it doesn't? What if it's worse? What if it's, you know, uh. So I, I asked the question, what, like, am I offered any protections here as a current town resident? You know, uh, you know, as, as a job is happening, I mean, what, what are my protections that I'm offered? Like, again, I. I've never had water in my basement, never had an issue with that, but what if all of a sudden a year from now I'm getting water? Well, I don't have a basement, I have a bottom, I have. Ground floor, but um, what if all of a sudden then I'm getting water and, you know, or I'm getting. Worse water in my backyard and now it's not flowing because it flows right to the path and out, but you know, I'm, I'm just. I, I'm new here, like, again, I, I've never dealt with, you know, construction right next to my house, so, um. And I was, I was just curious about that and like my neighbor Gary mentioned our pool liner floats every now, no, floated one since we've been here, but he had mentioned that. It was doing that when Skip was here too, but you know, I just, you know, water's getting worse, climate change is happening, you know, it's raining, obviously, more and more and more here, so. You know, sticking to like kind of the traditional, and I know we've been throwing that word out a lot, like, these are the industry standards and this is what typically happens. I, I mean, the writing's on the wall here. I, I think the next twenty years is gonna be anything but typical, um, of the last twenty years, so. I just want to know, are we just going about this business as usual? Are we gonna, you know, do we have? Like assurances for current town residents as things are changing and, um, stuff like that? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna go back to commissioners to see if you have follow-up questions.
Um. I am interested in, uh, I guess, ex- expounding upon the. Mitigation for, you know, the drainage, um, if you could just. Help explain it a little bit.
Okay, eh, yes, we will. A- a- and I would just like to point out that. Not having dealt in Farmington historically. Shannon, Bruce, they're both civil engineers. They, they, they look out for the town of Farmington. We have a civil engineer, maybe he looks out for our people, but in between, they, they, they come up with the answer. So, uh, it, it's something that doesn't get ignored, is all I wanted to say.
Completely understand.
Yep.
And agree.
I also just want to clarify that too, so we may be hired by the carriers. But I'm not looking out for the carriers. They give me a design and they say this is what we want to do, that. It doesn't matter who, who hires us. We're still following all of the rules and regulations of the town of Farmington. Of the state of Connecticut and using all the tools that we have. So, you know, I know it came up, like, you know, the NOAA Atlas. Uh, information, rainfall information that we're using may not be perfect, but unfortunately, that's the current standard. And that's what the state of Connecticut recommends we use. And then on top of that, there are other, uh, you know, safety factors and things that are considered, so. Um, and again, uh, we've worked with Shannon and Bruce, uh, for quite some time, uh, doing different designs as far as the actual.
Already, you'd already mentioned it.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, um, as far as the actual uh, mitigation system for the storm water for the roofs. Essentially, we have roof leader, you have your roof leaders that come down. We have pipes that will then collect all of those roof leaders together. And put them into underground storage chambers. So those are just big hollow voids essentially in the ground, so that as the rainwater hits the roof. Collected by the gutters, goes down the downspouts, goes through those pipes and fills up those structures, so that instead of that surface water. Immediately flowing uh, to wherever its original destination was, which in this case would be either to. Uh, that, that first yard drain or to the other yard drain at the surface level where it could potentially mix with all this other surface water. And then uh, inundate uh, the properties, it's immediately sent uh, down the town drainage system. This. Changes the peak time at which that water is, is flowing during a storm and effectively changes how much water, um, at a, at that given time. Is going. It also allows for, as that system starts to back up, it allows for a place for that water to go. So instead of all of that water, as the yard drains are starting to become uh, at their capacity or the town drainage system is at its capacity. Instead of that water backing up onto the, these properties or neighboring properties, it has a place to be stored. Um, and so that's the purpose of the um, roof leader info, roof leader system. We call them roof leader infiltration systems because the idea is that eventually they will infiltrate. Um, th- that's not necessarily what they're do. They're essentially small detention systems uh, as well. Um, so that would be the, the first component of that. I think that that answers the question. The other thing. Um, I wanted to mention is the reason that those yard drains are there uh, to begin with is that historically. I understand that road was raised, and so originally, all of the water, I would imagine the hydraulic pattern of this. All just kind of sheet flowed across down this property and across the road and made its way through and, and out. That road was historically raised, which dammed all of that water at this property. And so those yard drains were put in place to collect that water and get it back uh, into the drainage system.
Thank you.
Bobby? Um, no, I believe I have all the questions have been answered. I'm good. Okay.
Dave?
I think I'm good for now.
Bruce?
I think so too.
Okay, Mike? Kyla? Kyla, any questions? Is that muted? Oh, okay. Um, I guess one of my biggest concerns, and, and we've heard it from many, is the, the size of some of the homes. So, and, and I know we've got multiple votes to be made, whether it's tonight or, or next time. How does it change your plans if we? Say no on the expanded. Size of the homes?
Try to be diplomatic is my answer, if that's possible. Um, we have, we have a contract to purchase. We don't own the property, so. Uh, it's certainly possible that the carriers would walk away. Uh, and this property would. Continue to to sit there and be and deteriorate until somebody else came along if there was somebody who wanted to build smaller houses on this site. Again, I I. Shannon, do you know when those regulations were adopted?
The expanded home regulation goes. Yeah, two or meant to. I can change. May fourth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
For say expanded home reg.
And 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 the regulation was drafted as it as it was with special permits to to give that regulation a chance to breathe and and. And reflect what happens uh in in the marketplace and uh. We we certainly. Uh, we know they're not building any more land, so the land that's available, uh, we try to utilize as best we can. Again, I I I reiterate the point that the the height, the in the width of that house, as you're looking at it from West District Road. Uh, and the height of that house, as you're looking at it from the abutting property owners, that's not going to change regardless of the number of square feet. The square footage that we're adding is to the back of the property, uh, which uh certainly is not not part of the uh streetscape. Uh, that's, that's why we we don't think it's a, it's a big ask. Uh, we think that it's something that's reasonable. Uh, because the great room and the master bedroom are the two rooms that we're we're trying to expand a little bit more by by about two hundred and eighty feet. Um, I again, it's not, it's not the length of the width. It's the bump out in the back. And I think that's important because these lots do have some room behind them. Uh, you know, in the in the backyard, the the backyards are significant, uh, and and that's where it's going to be um reflected.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? I kind of want to get a pulse. There's a lot of information tonight, clearly. Want to get a sense from individuals. Are you ready to vote tonight? Do you want to take? Some time to think through all the information? Matt, where are you at?
Um. I think I'm ready to vote. Um, the only question is there was. Uh, engineering delivered today. Um. Do we need to keep the? The hearing open if the engineering delivery does come back with some issues or there's additional comments?
So the the. Comments that we last issued are dated. Another date, uh, staff comments dated February sixth. So the suggestion is that those just be part of the requirement for addressing. I believe. The plan submitted today, the intent was to an address those comments. Those were posted to the website, so everyone had an opportunity to see. Those staff comments dated February sixth, so. I would just use that as the reference and. Typically, we end up reducing. The number of staff comments not going the other direction, so.
So with that, I I'm ready to vote tonight.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Bobby?
I'm ready.
Okay. Dave?
Um. Yeah, I think I can be ready.
Bruce?
I am as well.
Okay, and Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Because once we close the hearing. It's for us to discuss and.
Correct.
With no new information. Good. Sir?
I just. Like the.
Sir, can you go up to the microphone, please?
The existing house sits up on a hill. So that it has a basement underneath it. Is that what you plan on doing for these other houses? So that you can put a basement underneath those?
Thank you. I can't remember what the exact, I'm gonna look for you so I can give you the exact existing. Create. So the. The intent is to have these houses, again, uh, slightly mounted. Up just from a simple drainage perspective. We obviously want to keep the water flowing away from the house to lower points. I believe the existing houses, the finished floor was around a three forty-two elevation. I think directly surrounding the. Existing house is more or less three thirty-nine, three forty, somewhere in that range. Um. So. The intent for for this is not to raise these houses up to a point where we can get full basements and now they're six feet. Out of the, out of the ground with the first floor. They're actually, the first floor elevations are actually lower so that they maintain. Um, basically a a very nice aesthetic from the street. Either there's a slight incline of the driveway to grade water. Out away from the driveway, but not a five percent slope or or anything like that. Um, so these, these houses are designed to be very aesthetic from the street, not to be hugely mounded. Um, and again, the. Technology, I would, I would call it from a waterproofing perspective and sump pump. Perspective um has come a long way in the last forty to fifty years uh from when these houses were built. Um. I guess, you know, we we the carriers are confident that they'll be able to keep dry basements. I mean, this is their reputation and their industry. Um, I think they've built enough houses probably in groundwater to that they've. Figured it out. And I'm sure if they go to dig a foundation and they don't feel that they don't feel confident that they can put a full basement. In these houses and keep them dry, that they very well might change that plan, and they may have to change that plan. But. Um, at this point, we don't, we don't feel. Uh, that there's concern.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any additional closing comments or if you're good?
I I'd like the commission to know that we we don't operate in it. In a, in a, in a vacuum, uh, you know, we certainly uh, we we tried to design the property in in the subdivision so that. It it does fit in the neighborhood, that the house sizes are not uh extraordinary. Uh, that we think it'll be a compliment to the to the neighborhood and that the the existing structure just doesn't work. Uh, and and therefore it has to be demolished. So I think for all of those reasons and everything we've presented tonight, I'd ask the commission to approve our special permits. In our, in our subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hereby close the public hearing. Uh, we have three votes. To make motions on and discuss and vote. Um, the first one is around the three lot subdivision. Can I get a motion in a second, including, I think, the. The conditions that Shannon outlined in the agenda review. Everybody's looking at you, Matt.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, to approve the three lot subdivision. For Carrier Holdings LLC at thirty-four West District Road. Sufficient.
Well, seconded. Thanks, Bobby. Bobby seconded. Any discussion? No, I'm good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next is for the expanded homes. Matt, you want to give it another shot?
Oh, keep going, yeah. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit to construct three new homes in excess of thirty-two hundred square feet. Uh, from Carrier Holdings LLC located at thirty-four West District Road.
Um. Can I ask that you refer to the agenda review and the wording in the agenda review? We've got it in front of you.
In accordance that that portion as well?
Well, no, but they from an area, the not to exceed. For the living area. So you can, you you're fine just rather than the thirty-two hundred square feet, the not to exceed.
Okay.
From a living area and then.
I'd like to amend my motion. Um. Us, I'd like to amend my motion for approval to the special permit to construct three new homes. Not to exceed twenty-seven hundred square feet of living. Area or thirty-five hundred square feet of total area each. By Carrier Holdings LLC, thirty-four West District Road.
Second. Thanks, Bobby. All right, discussion, thoughts? Matt?
I I do. I do feel they're they're larger. They're larger houses. I I think we've all recognized that. I also do think that. The way in which they're getting that extra square footage is is not. Impacting the visual nature to the neighborhood. It's going backwards. Um. Yeah, I I think it's, it's well done.
Okay, Bobby, thoughts?
Um, I I agree with Matt. I am, you know, I I feel for the neighbors. I feel for the residents. Um, you know, they all said that. They're right. Their houses are within twelve hundred to sixteen hundred square feet, but they were all built in the seventies. For you to find a builder right now building anything under two thousand square feet is impossible. Because it's not financially feasible, and let's face it, it's a business. Um, I think that he's absolutely right. From the road, you're not going to notice if it's a twenty-four hundred or a twenty-seven hundred. And if he drops it down to twenty-four hundred, it's within his right to do that. So to have the bump outs in the back, I I don't see a problem with it. I I. I think we're fine.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I guess I have a little difficulty in the fact that it's significantly larger than most of the houses there.
Okay, Bruce?
I'm I'm leaning the way Matt and Bob are, and I I think the fact that uh there is. Really no difference from the street visualization and perspective. Uh, and there is sufficient room on the lots for those bump outs. Uh, I I think in this instance, it should be all right.
Okay, Mike?
No.
Okay, yeah, I, this is the one hang up for me and and everything that we've talked about, I think. Given the size of the neighborhood. The homes in the neighborhood, I think these are much, much larger and and won't fit the character of the neighborhood. So. I maybe I'm leaning in a different direction than some of you, which is fine, but just want to put it on the record where I am. So. Are we ready to vote? Everybody's clear on what we're voting on?
Well, before before we go, Scott, can you talk a little bit more about that? Like, i- if if. If you put the houses at twenty-four hundred square feet, what would, would you be more comfortable? Even though they still have that same appearance? So that's really where. I think some of us are in between in our discussions. So let's keep talking about that just for a minute more. I don't want to delay that. So w- would you be? Okay with that, but visually they don't change?
I think part of the issue is these are conceptuals of what those houses might look like, right? So once you. Grant thirty-two hundred, you grant thirty-two hundred, right? And I'm, I want to protect. The neighborhood from that. From from having homes that are. A thousand, twelve hundred, sixteen hundred, whatever the square footage is. Larger than what the surrounding neighborhood. It just. They're gonna, they're gonna stick out. In my opinion, it's my opinion, they're gonna stick out.
I understand, but that's, that's why I want to deli- talk about it and deliberate about it. You know, Dave, you feel the same way?
Yeah, and if I can speak to that too. If there were two lots and there were two houses there, it'd make a big difference for me. But we're. Going from a beautiful farm to suddenly slicing this into Ethan lots, uh, what I think they'd be point seven acres each. And putting a large house that there are three, three similar houses in there. I think it's a significantly changed character, isn't it? So I just got concerned about that. And and right, it's uh doing it to up to twenty-four hundred. It it may not be such a huge difference, but um. But anything I can do to help protect it a bit.
Wow. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I I still, you know. From the road, you're not going to be able to tell. Um. And twenty-four to twenty-seven with the bump outs. It's a hundred square feet, which is roughly. Ten by twelve. Um, to the back. I understand it's three lots, um, you know, and we're taking away. One big house in a farm to put into three lots, but it's not like they're crammed on top of each other. Um, so that's why I don't have a huge problem with it. And like. Like we had said, if he had come in and said, we're building him up to twenty-four hundred square feet. He'd be within his right. What he's asking is the extra three hundred square feet, which is essentially a hundred and fifty square feet on each floor, which is fifteen by ten. You know, um, so that's why I don't see as big a problem with it. And and again, I go back to, you know. Unfortunately, this is a nineteen seventies neighborhood. With twelve to sixteen hundred square foot ranches. You you're not. Building. Seventeen hundred square foot ranches anymore. You can't find a builder to build a seventeen hundred square foot ranch. You can't find a builder to build a two thousand square foot colonial. So is it? Commonplace? Unfortunately, yeah, it's it's sign of the times. You know? And and let's face it. He he's doing it for monetary value. And to almost to flipside it and to punish the Rose Basins. And say you can't sell your property because we don't like what's going in there. And they get stuck with a property that they may never be able to turn over, and now it's almost a liability to them. I don't feel as is our due diligence either. You know what I mean?
Other thoughts? Shannon, do you want us to do a roll call, roll it on this? Does it matter?
It it doesn't matter. We'll be able to capture it since not, yeah.
Very good.
So you can just do it and all in favor and then all opposed.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. All right, we have one more vote. On the historic. Matt, you have the.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for. Consideration for the protection of historic factors in the R thirty zone. For Carriers Holdings LLC. At thirty-four West District Road. Then need to do the article. In section.
Yeah, that's okay. You got it.
Can I get, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Bobby. All right, any discussion? Thoughts, questions?
More thoughts? So it. I think it's uh obvious. Everyone would like to pers- you know, to protect uh and preserve historic buildings. Um. But dollars.
Yeah.
The owners are the ones and you have a right. To, you know, do what you'd like with your property. Um, and it's, it's obviously has some. Significant uh condition. Uh, problems. And I I think it's. Ultimately their choice.
Thanks, Bobby. Okay.
Yeah, hopefully I feel it's kind of backwards, very approved. Yes, and and some divisions, so it's. You know, I hate to see it, though. I'd love to see somebody take the barn away and do something else with it, but it's really up to the family.
Bruce?
Yeah, I I I have a harder time emotionally with it as well because it's uh. You know, it's our heritage, uh, a- a- and and we're, we're going to be throwing it away. And and that decision should never be taken lightly, and it's i- it's hard to do. I mean, it's a balloon frame building. They don't do that anymore. There's. There's so many things uh uh about that, but uh I I think the case has been made. Uh, and uh, you know, sometimes uh you just have to yield to the logic of the situation. So while I will be. Uh, have an emotionally hard time with it. Uh, the the Mr. Spock side says you you gotta, you gotta do it for the rest of everything that makes sense, you know? Logic, logic. I'll have to go before the, for the heart in this case.
So thanks, Bruce. Mike, thoughts?
I wholeheartedly agree with Bruce's sentiment. It is, I mean. I didn't even know about balloon frames until I went to fire school, like, it's, it's wild. Yeah, um, but. Yeah. It's their property and do what they see.
Yeah, it's tough to see it go.
Yeah.
Yep, I echo all those thoughts too. So. Okay, ready to vote? Everybody's clear on what we're voting on? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we got to get Patrick back in the room. Quick, can I get my my page back, Matt?
Yes.
Need it for the next one?
Yeah.
I have three copies, so.
I think I need it for the next one. I lost track of. Oh, no, they're, they're.
I'm gonna fall asleep a couple of times.
Yeah. All right.
I'll steal that again.
Yeah.
I link up with like.
If there are.
If we could ask folks to sort. If we could ask folks to sort of take conversations out into the hall, please, while we continue with the meeting. Shannon, do we need to do anything else with the Michael Lavoie? It's just discussion and voting now, correct?
Correct.
Did we get?
We're thirty years younger, we'll set us with the beach.
I was gonna say the same thing, but what's there is. I appreciate.
Oh, we get it.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know how much money they don't did the bush lady puts, which is down the street.
That's what we were just talking.
And it's still not going, right?
Yeah.
No, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
I've heard all the stories about that.
All right, so we're on to uh, Michael Lavoie application for special permit for home business to keep poultry and raise rabbits. Twelve, what? Oh, where did Bruce go?
Took a break.
We went to the restaurant. Yeah, I saw him walk out.
Do we have actual wording on what we're voting on? Or we don't? Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
I didn't realize Bruce left. Thank you.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
I guess we're on like a two-minute recess, Shannon. I don't want to start without.
Well, yeah, you can do just a few minutes. Yes, whatever, yes. Um, but I've got, so I've got the Ariel up and.
Bruce isn't voting on this, so.
Uh, no, so you can, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if you, so you do, you I guess officially need to.
Um, he's back.
So.
Officially appoint whoever's gonna take over for Liz.
Yeah, absolutely. So Mike, you're okay selling in for Liz and you've reviewed everything going back to December?
I was assuming meetings when it happened, review the record and feel competent and competent to.
So Bobby, your question, no, we don't have anything to vote on. That's our first step.
Okay.
To determine what the motion's gonna look like.
Gotcha. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So read over everybody's suggestions, but I never saw it like compiled into a set of wording.
Yep.
So the, the last step was I had taken everybody's emails that were sent to me.
Yeah.
And then put them back out and I don't know if, and I can bring that up if you'd like, uh, cause I've got all that.
Yeah, that was.
Um.
Thanks, Shannon.
But that was the, that was the last step. So, and there wasn't any addition, I thought perhaps with some of the comments that it might have spurred then additional comments. It did not. I did not receive any follow-up
Okay.
comments or dialogue from anyone. So this first round was, was it with respect to thoughts? So I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to take a look at it, um. But there's some were definitely like it, it, if one of them were, is gonna change the direction of the conversation if you had all taken, I don't know if, again, if everyone had taken a look at it.
Well, I wonder if I could throw something out there that might.
Well, and I don't want to leave, I don't, so again, my role was to compile everything so that you all could kind of save time, right? So rather than have it like to hammer it out, you had the time to kind of decompress, put your thoughts into words and then share them so that it was then synthesized. So.
Yeah, let me, let me just throw a couple of thoughts out as we, as we roll into this. One is, um, I appreciate the amount everybody's invested in this. This has been kind of complicated. I want to acknowledge this was probably more complicated than any of us thought going into it. So I appreciate that. Um, as we sort of decide what direction we're gonna go, I've gotten the sense, just as I was reading through this and from comments in earlier meetings, that simplicity might be the best thing here. And in our effort to try to do it all, we got kind of complicated last time. So if that's any guidance for us, as we try to figure out what the best resolution here is, I just want to throw that out there, but we can go complicated too. If everybody agrees that that's the way to go, that's just my initial inclination. So maybe we'll just start with you, Matt, cause you're the man in the hot seat, like thoughts about what the you know, right? Thoughts about.
At the rabbit.
That's what I had to mention in the end.
Um. Yeah. I, I, I saw several, uh, mentions and I, I agree with it. Um, just like a solid number. It's like forty of any denomination. But no more than twenty. It's like an algebra problem, right? So, um, that makes the most sense to me. Simple. Right? Um, and I believe Scott, you said something about, uh, you know, giving a time limit for the, whatever the little chicks, what do we call these little ones?
Bunnies.
Bunnies. Um, yeah. I mean, that makes sense to me.
Bobby, where are you at?
Yeah, you know, I'm in the same boat. I mean, like I wrote, I, I'm trying to be sympathetic to him. So, you know, I'm trying to give him a grace period to, to have his breeding business, if you will. Like Shannon says, though, it's going to be difficult to kind of quantify. So maybe we do need to put a, a total number on it, you know, I mean, originally I'd said twenty, twenty bunnies and, and let them breed. But only have a certain time period to get rid of those bunnies. But none of us are vets and I'm sure the town doesn't have a vet to say, well, that's a six weeks old bunny. That's a two week old bunny. That's a nine month old bunny. So that might not be the right way to go either, you know, but I'm trying to be sympathetic with them and say, listen, you know, you got six weeks to get rid of your litter, you know, like you do with dogs and, and, you know, puppies. But, you know, I, I, I'm still stuck on the number of that's a lot of animals there at one time.
Matt, I gotta, I want to ask a quick question. The forty that you're talking about, that includes at any given time, that's the max, whether it's bunnies or, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, twenty chickens, twenty rabbits. Uh, if he decides to breed the rabbits, you know, you got eight weeks to, to get rid of the litter. You know, if each rabbit's having ten babies at a time, he's got two moms giving, giving birth. That's twenty bunnies. You know, plus his twenty adults. That's forty rabbits. You know, so I'm, I'm trying to be sympathetic with them, but I'm still having a hard time with that number because it's a lot of animals. You know, plus the twenty chickens.
Uh, so, so what you're, so, yeah. So what you're saying is twenty, no matter what, right? Twenty on the bunnies, I mean, so forget the poultry.
Right.
Twenty bunnies and, um, no matter what, if you walk in there and you count, it's twenty.
So originally I had given him a grace period, so I was thinking twenty adult bunnies because he's got thirty, but I said, listen, twenty. But then you know, I was giving him a grace period to, to breed them and you got eight weeks to have an extra twenty, if you will.
Right.
But again, we're not vets. And when, you know, you could walk in there and spot check them. Do we know what an eight week old bunny is? Or do we know that when eight month old bunny is?
All right. I'm stuck on the, the home business, right? I mean.
Well, and that too.
Right. So in the regulation, we have regulations for, for home business. And if we were to change that regulation, that's one thing, but the reality is, is the regulation is written, right? And we follow it. Um, and if we're gonna say you can, you know, even if it's not done for profit, it is really essentially a business, right? I mean, that's what you're doing. You're, you're breeding bunnies and then you're, so essentially it's almost like giving them permission to do that. Uh, the, the approach I take is more like twenty bunnies. Obviously, you know, we're not going to sit here and say you could breed them, but we're not going to really know if he does or not. But if you walk in and you count them, there's twenty, there's twenty. I mean, that's it. I'm kind of, I'm stuck on, on that, you know, unfortunately, I mean, I know, like I said, it is, this is a tough one. I, I'm trying to be sympathetic as well. Um, but in the end, you know, had he come before us before this happened, what would we say?
Correct.
Right?
We would have said twenty.
It'd be a lot easier of a decision, you know?
Yeah. Hey, yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the same lines. Um, it actually sounds like two permits too, right? It's, it sounds like it's a home business permit. And also, we also have separate animal raising.
Correct.
Permit. So, so really it's, it's a double ask here. Um, and who's gonna monitor this? Um, you know, who's gonna make sure he's complying with, with, with this? And we're, we're saying yes to forty animals, but we're sort of saying yes to fifty fifty plus.
Yeah, right.
Because, because the baby is trying to be sympathetic to, to the business piece. So I'm, I'm having a hard time quantify, you know, figuring out how, how do you quantify that? And how do you make sure, how do you make it so it's gonna comply and there's no gotchas in there? You know, he needs to comply. And also I had a question about the waste and making sure it wasn't going to run off to your properties and the answer seemed kind of iffy about what it was being done right now with it.
Well, and that brings up a good point, you know, he says he's giving away the fertilizer free to anybody who wants it. What happens when nobody wants it? Where does it go? What does he do with it?
Right. And I know we were saying the hutches are very close to property line and back, and we want to add in that those, those all do need to be moved. Into within ten feet, ten feet, is that right?
I believe I said ten feet.
It's a pretty small parcel.
To align with the poultry regulations.
And actually, you know, when you mentioned that too, I mentioned part of that is on an easement. Part of his property. So essentially he's got, uh, I don't know, I think I figured point four acres per house and, you know, obviously in this, it's an awful lot.
Bruce, I think you were an alternate on this, so because we're in deliberations. We have to cut off.
I set that in the corner.
You don't, if you want to, you can, but, uh, well.
Um, yeah, uh, it sounds like the approach is conditional. If business or nonprofit route, then number of rabbits, uh, you could have, it sounds like we really want him to establish himself in some type of way as well, correct? Um. But whether that be nonprofit or not, um. And one of my biggest concerns is the parcel is, I think, point seven, I was uh, Dave was bringing up it, if it was a larger piece of land, I, I would have no issue with him having forty rabbits. You could have the hutches back and I I am concerned about the animals themselves, their quality of life. Um, my aunt runs a rabbit rescue and she lives on a farm and she has over fifty rabbits that she gets mostly from like after, after Easter when kids don't want the rabbits anymore. And that's how she ends up with them. And it's not on point seven. Each one has like a doghouse basically to be raised, rehabilitated and then um, you know, donated because it's a nonprofit business, so she's not making a buck off of it. Oh, yeah, um, number twenty sounds for the, for the parcel. I'm, I'm leaning towards that as well. I think that's just the rabbits, not including the chickens and the ducks, uh. Personally, I would, I would like to see, you know, these animals have some room to move around and be animals.
Thank you. So Shannon, point of clarity here, we we have to approve the poultry, the rabbits and the home business? Are those three things that we, because the poultry wasn't approved prior to this either, right?
Correct. So the poultry, there's the application for the poultry and then he, he had put in the application for the, because we, the rabbits, we're trying to figure out what to do with the rat, even on a staff level.
Hmm.
I would concur with Commissioner Carrier's observations with respect to the challenges of the home business provision. Which is why staff in the agenda review is suggesting that it be permitted under the fur bearing animal provision. But that's, there is no in, in the, in our regulations, there are no parameters for the raising, keeping, selling, et cetera, of fur bearing. It's just, it's just in there as a line item. It's an allowed element of the regulation. So, but staff came across the same thing as we were looking at the home business provision.
Right? And the, and that's the thing, right? The breeding, the intent of it, I think that's.
Right, whether you make a dime or not.
Yeah. It's tough. It's like you can't, you know, how do you, how do you say yes to that? It's clearly not, you know, okay, so you say no to that. And then it's like, all right, well, you do gotta put some kind of number because number one, there seems like a lot of handles begin with, right? But then number two, you have to be able to quantify it. You know, you walk in there and you gotta be able to say, okay, yes, they're following the regulation or they're not. Let's say they get a complaint from their neighbor.
Yep.
So.
Is that, and did I answer your question, Mr. Chair?
I think so. I don't know. This one is.
Not the way you wanted me to, but I.
Well, maybe I'm still confused about the home business part. I don't know if everybody else is too.
I'm very confused.
So we're at a place where we're saying twenty.
So.
Twenty. But then where, where does the home business, I feel like that's.
Without them submitting an application for home business to.
So.
The home business.
Okay. Well, no. The requirements of the home business are up on the screen. So article four, article, sorry, article two, section one B twenty-three, twenty-three, home business. In the regulation, these are the eleven parameters that a home business, whether you're regardless of what that business is, right? Hairdresser, um, seamstress, uh, somebody doing accounting or tax work, et cetera. These are the parameters that have to be met in order to secure a special permit for a home business.
So right, right away, and, and number one, he's in violation because it's not inside the dwelling.
Everything related is not in violation.
Correct.
Right, right, right.
So.
But if it was a horse ranch, right? You had horses on your own property.
Uh, you need, well, there's acreage requirements. There are acreage requirements for horses. Um, but it is one horse per
Two acres.
Two acres. And then once you get to five acres, you meet the definition for a farm.
Okay.
And do we have people who do boarding in town?
I'm sorry.
Do we have people who do boarding of horses in town?
Yeah, one over on my brother.
I don't know, honestly.
Who've got permits, I should, I guess, is anyone permitted to have a, a horse boarding business here?
I'm not aware of a boarding business, but I don't know what Crowl, so Crowl Farm may, I don't know what Crowls do.
That's what I'm thinking.
Um, Polo Grounds has horses and they board. But that's, they've they pre-exist having to get these, right? The, so, um, they don't, I'm not aware of them having a special permit or they've got, they're falling in under agricultural and the farm, and then it's
Yep.
It, it, it's its own use for a farm because it's, it, they both far exceed the five acre uh, minimum.
So does that leave, just talking out loud again, does that leave us if we're at twenty and twenty, but there's no home business component of it? Is that essentially what we're?
Basically, I think that's where you're, unfortunately, yes, that's where, so that they buying and selling needs to cease because he can't meet the parameters of the home business.
The home business.
Right. So even if he was to come to us and say, hey, I'd like to have this business, but you can't, right? And under these regulations, right, and these, um, provisions and whatever. So. Yeah. So that, so that's the way, that's how I'm coming at it. It's like it was spelled out in the agenda review in the beginning, you know, it's really, if, if that was an avenue we could take, that, that would be great, but it's just not, right? And it's clear that it's not. So now it's like, what are you allowing? You're just like the ducks you have, or the ducks. Um, poultry, um, chickens, ducks and chickens. Yeah. So the poultry, you know, we do have guidelines and we have a number, um, right, uh, and that's it, right? So now we have bunnies before us and we never, I don't think this has come up very often or probably never did, right? So um, and then here we are trying to figure out, okay, well, you know, twenty, you know, twenty bunnies, how many bunnies is that, right? Like, you know, is it, is that a lot for a piece of property? In this particular case, it's forty animals, right? If you allow twenty and twenty, we're just mimicking the regulation we have in place with poultry. Wrong, so.
That's not counting all the babies that he could have.
If, well, that's it, right? And that's why, that's why the number, that's the limit, right? So if he chooses to keep two to breed and he breeds eighteen of them, well, he's, he's within our, yeah, yeah. You know, and unfortunately now, you know, what made this tough is he's got thirty and those are breeding, the thirty are breeding, so right off the bat, you know?
Yeah.
That's ten more than, than what we're thinking, or at least.
Right.
Sounds like we're somewhat going for it here. So yeah, I mean, it, to my opinion, I mean, it's pretty unfortunately cut and dry, you know, we put the number on it and we try to pick a time period and, and that's it, right?
Yeah.
And again, like, like somebody else said, if it was a bigger piece of property.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we could say, okay, you gotta, it's two acres, you have to stay in the middle and, and now maybe you allow the thirty or the forty, right? No breeding still, because it's still a business.
Yeah.
Um, and, but you're not going to enforce that anyways, you know, if he's got forty breeds it, I mean, are we really gonna know? So. So, yeah.
All right. So we're in agreement on twenty twenty, no home business. All right, so we're in agreement on twenty twenty no home business. As well to make sure before I, because there's some other items that were listed for consideration, the agenda review that we should probably.
I mean, uh, look at. I'm good with that, I I was trying to be generous, but yeah, I think you're right, I'm good with it.
Matthew, okay?
Um. Come back to me.
All right, I can see it on the face.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like twenty twenty is actually very generous, just because, uh, we've, we were pretty much saying twenty animals on property, because I don't think we ever thought of rab, or we came up with the twenty, or thought of it.
Right.
So we're actually saying you can have, you know, double the animals, it's still an awful lot. Yeah, I'd be putting this stuff there, yeah.
Like any additional thoughts?
It's a little out of scope thought, but it just seems like maybe the the town. Council should consider what a definition of a pet is, so we don't. Run into this problem with breeding again, because they're not living in the house, you know, it's. And you're, you're. You're meeting them to. As a hobby, you could really do that with dogs with a lot of different animals, so we don't run into this problem again as a town, I don't.
Well, and it would be, it's not town council, it's.
It's us.
It's us.
I didn't know.
So if we, I mean.
I didn't know who.
And so just like we did with the, uh, ducks.
Hmm.
We could revamp the fur bearing animal. To do something similar, or the the duck, the poultry, excuse me, so chickens and, right, and just like when folks have chickens. Whether they're selling the eggs or the neighbors are, they're giving them away. I'm not, at no point did that with that, you know, it normally it's at a hobby level, most of the time they're being used, the eggs are personal consumption. If there's a farm stand sign out in the front yard and people are stopping, then we put in it with, no, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Because it's.
Yeah.
But if. Somebody's got a, whatever. Deal and then, hey, it's soccer practice, let me know, and you know, ten bucks for a carton of eggs and they're selling the eggs. Uh, 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 there's zero way first afternoon.
Right.
And and at the end of the day, I don't think that's something we wanna. Get in the middle of anyway.
Hmm, hmm, yeah.
So, but. Yeah, you could revamp the fur bearing, I believe the regulation talks about, um. Uh, dogs, I have to go back and there is something about, there's.
About being a kennel, let's say, a certain number of dogs.
Sure.
And and puppies over certain.
And I think, yeah, so it it touches on the dog breeding. Um. Yeah. And that's it, so we've had people ask about pigs and goats and we just, from a staff level, we say, no, unless you're meeting a definition of a farm, we're not. We're not branching out beyond. The chickens, which seems to be far and wide through Farmington.
Hmm.
And, um, and this honestly is the first rabbits that we've stumbled across.
Yeah.
So we could revamp the, our own regulation to expand on it if we wanted to.
That would be something.
Do we have limits on dogs and cats in general, number of dogs and cats?
But dogs.
Dogs is six, I think.
I think, adult.
In the regulation.
Yeah.
I'd have to tiptoe, I can, why were you?
Yeah.
Or chatting, I can take a peek and see if I can come across it.
It's funny how they don't limit cats.
Yeah.
Well, some of it starts to become animal, animal control and health district and.
Yeah.
Right, we try to stay in our own lane to the extent possible. And not be duplicative.
I mean, I think the obvious is like Pat brought up, you know, if unless you change. The, um, regulation. We're opening ourselves up to. Who else is gonna do it?
I mean, the only other thing is to increase it, right, so it's almost like, we're not gonna say it's okay to do a home business, but let's, let's allow him to have fifty.
Right.
And he's gonna keep going what he's doing and nobody's gonna know, but I mean, I think ultimately. It come, to me, it just comes down to the number of animals, and and you know, even the, in a small neighborhood like that. I mean, somebody's driving to pick up this bunny, said, are they always grabbing one when they come down, right? I don't know if there's a cul-de-sac on that road, I can't.
Yeah.
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 Um, so. But, you know, it's. Again, it it just takes, you know, imagine you're living next to that, that house, right, I mean, everybody's fine with it now, but what if it starts to become a nuisance, well, he's got. Permission now already, you know, it's not much you can do. Well.
Yeah.
And then you also have like.
Right, right.
Um, David Mike said, you know, yeah, part of it's Simon Eastman, because it's wetlands Eastman. So now you start getting the water coming up and all that, what's the quality like for those animals that are right there on that border and, you know, I mean. Yeah, there's a lot to consider.
Yeah. Matt, you ready?
Yeah. There's a lot to.
There's a lot to consider.
So I I, uh, I don't like the idea of removing someone's hobby, um. That said, this is being run as a business.
Yeah.
Um. I wonder if there is. You know, if he just accepts donations in kind, is it a business anymore?
I mean, that's striding a fine line.
Right.
That's like the egg thing.
Whenever there's a rule, there's a way around it, right?
The actual request was for a special permit for a home business, though, that's what he is asking for.
Well, that was, that's, so at the, when, so in fairness to, because they don't. These, they don't know, right, a resident doesn't know, they come to us and so, and as we looked at it initially, we said, okay, put in. Home business and ducks and or poultry and as we then, as I dove through this. To try to figure out, because it came to us as a, as a complaint.
Yeah.
So we're now obviously, right, so that's how it comes in and we try to get these into compliance. Because that's the most prudent thing to do with these, like, get your permit, bring it into compliance. So it started with us to say, hey, just. Grab, you know, put it in these categories and well, we're gonna try to figure it out, well, as. As I'm now sitting doing the agenda review and putting pencil to paper and saying, okay, it complies with X, Y, Z, and I went. No.
No, 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 no.
No, I went, okay, well. Plan B, and the fur bearing animals is there, so that's, that's how, that's the genesis of of that, is that it. Started with our office with direction, trying to provide some guidance to him as to how to get the application.
But even in his own speaking, he did say he's selling these.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
So.
Uh, yeah.
Equal saying, new business.
Yeah, right, and even if it's nonprofit, it's still, there's an exchange, you know.
There's a money exchange, yeah.
Yeah, and even. I get what you're saying, Matt, I think it's the fact that it's outside.
Yeah.
And you've got people coming in like. It's, it's branched out beyond a hobby now to the, it's crossed that business line that is gonna affect neighbors, I mean, that's how it went, came to us.
Sure.
To begin with, so.
Totally understand, uh, it's a tough one.
It is.
Like, after all of our discussion, I still have no idea how this, how we frame this. Yeah. Does, does anyone?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I restated where where I stand, it's, you know, pretty obvious to me, unfortunately. You know, it's, it's trying to put a a number on it and then. And then it's up to him to to follow that, however, he, you know, and we know that it's more, that, you're right, I mean, what he's doing is gonna go away, because it it he's got thirty and. You know, his intent is, you have more of this. But the rate, the proper channel would have been to come to see if you can do that to begin with, right, and a lot of people don't even realize or know or whatever, right, a lot of the ducks and. Poultry that are coming in, come in the same way. But it doesn't change anything, that's how it is, and in reality. The proper way now is for somebody, whether we were to do it on our own, or he would approach us with some kind of. Regulation change that we can consider.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's the proper way to do it, unfortunately, and and.
Yep.
It's a, it's a hard decision, because obviously now we're all sympathetic to it.
Right.
But, but, to me, it's just, it is the way it is, I mean. It's a tough choice, but but I I feel that it's the right one, because, you know, it's. Clearly under business, you can't, and. And then the number of of animals alone is is quite a bit, you know. So. So to frame it, to answer your question, that's how I would frame it, that's it, you know, it's, it's a number of poultry, number of bunnies. Um, you know, and I would still want the fence because of the amount of. You know, that, I mean, I would think that is probably a better idea, I mean, it's pretty close on it, which one is his, again, it's it's that one there and he's.
He's twelve at the end.
Patrick, they're keeping them at least ten feet off the side and rear and property. Versus the fence, I don't know.
I mean, if I'm, 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 if if, nobody else wants to push the fence, because you're right, I mean, that's, it's expensive to put the fence, um, but his, which one was it, Shannon, again?
It's twelve.
Yeah, okay.
So right here at the end.
Yeah, so you see how.
He's got that brown area, you could put a fence right there.
Yeah, even if the house was. You know, it's, it's really close.
They're, um.
Trying with the hutches.
Yeah, the hutches are are in this here, let me, um.
Yeah.
So all the hutches are on the rear property line.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, you dropped that, I I'm I'm fine either way on that, you know. Um, obviously, when I did say it, he agreed to it, he was agreeing to it with the, with that going on, yeah, so. Uh, yeah, so maybe you drop the fence, but it's a timeframe, it's a number of rabbits, timeframe, number of poultry. Um. And and then the timeframe is the biggest thing, I think, because obviously we wanna. We wanna be realistic, we don't wanna, we don't wanna let it drag on for two years, but at the same time, we don't wanna put them in a position, yeah, so do anything drastic, you know.
Right.
So. Um, so that's where I stand.
Anyways, I'll be also voting on business.
So we should, so the right, the best recommendation I have would be the pull to do three. Do a vote on poultry. Do a vote on fur bearing animals and do a vote on.
Business.
Business.
Okay.
Okay. We need to include anything in the items considered in motion, and there's like, I know the typical poultry stuff, but.
So the poultry stuff is.
Feet off the side. And rear property for the hutches, things like that.
That's up. To your discretion, if you want those added in, I think the poultry ones are fairly standard.
Yeah.
The normal.
Maybe, I'm looking at number two, everybody, I don't know if we're gonna include that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, which partially gets, I think, your concern, Patrick.
Yep.
Uh, part of it with the poultry is the noise, right, so for, I wish you.
To number four.
Apparently don't have with the rabbits, so. Um, but. I believe they're about five feet, the, as they stand, they're they're about five feet off the property line.
The rear, not the side, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, the rear is not as important, right, I mean, it's. To me, it's a side.
Hmm.
You know, I'm I'm just picturing that that day where. It's, or that week, like, we've had one of the most humid summers ever, you know, I I can only imagine, you know, if they're, if they're too close and. It could be an inconvenience for the neighbor, you know, who's potentially outside barbecuing or something, you know.
Yeah.
So.
How many, how many poultry are there currently? Was it the twenty or?
There, there were twenty-six originally, I believe at the last meeting, he indicated he was down to twenty-two. So he's got, he still has to get, he still has to drop it to twenty.
Because he's still got ducks.
Two of them were ducks.
Right, he had six ducks, he got rid of four.
I guess I'm thinking, like, we talked about putting a timeline with.
Hmm.
That makes sense, Shannon, to put a timeline on.
You can, I know.
I'd wanna do it for both, not just. The rabbits, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Have a sense of a timeline, should we?
Well, I think, again, I think. Read it, six months on the ducks or chicken, the poultry and. Six months to a year on the rabbits, anywhere, I wouldn't do less than six months, I wouldn't do more than a year on the cats. This is where I am from a guidance standpoint.
I think a year would be a very short time.
Yeah.
Most, and I'm sympathetic.
I agree with that, yeah.
I missed that.
I I was saying a year for for the rabbits, six months for the chickens. And a year for the rabbits, he definitely seems like he had, uh. Some attachment there, I think that would be reasonable.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay, anybody have concerns with that, we're gonna make Patrick try to make a motion on it?
I think Max is all it.
I mean, I was. Well, depends, right, so we, we'll do the, you wanna do the ducks first?
Yeah, that's.
Uh, poultry.
Poultry, please.
Uh, yeah, you're right, poultry, okay.
Well, does the poultry include ducks?
Yes.
Yeah, it's included, okay. That's why we changed it to poultry, to make sure ducks and chickens and.
Peasants and.
Peasants and whatever else. Non-fur bearing.
So we let other people have ducks and.
Yes.
In order in Swiss.
Yeah, our limit's twenty.
Yeah.
It's twenty, so you can do ten and ten, twelve and eight, I don't, I.
All right, gotcha.
Yeah. And and there are quite a few people that there's a mix, so. But anyhow.
Okay.
Cultural roots.
Shannon knows.
Yeah, see, this one's not written, I'll, it's gonna be a little tough, all right, so on the poultry, so we wanna do a limit of, we're gonna add the limit of six months. I I have, yeah, six months for the poultry, right, we're comfortable with that, and then. No mail, I guess I could read that one in, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's pretty much it, right, with the, if I cover those two, the six months.
Correct, and five, so five and. When he wasn't doing any signs anyhow, but five, the waste management practice and the, yep. So four and five.
Four and five, okay, and then.
Three, four and five, right, do the poultry.
Right, yeah.
Then you could really just do that.
Okay, and then the timeframe is at six months from today? Does that have to be that specific or?
Well, it's just gotta be six.
Six months, maybe just call it six months?
So six, six months for, we would probably, we would count it six months from, well, normally we do six months from the appeal period.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just say six months.
So just six.
Just basic, I got it, okay. All right. All right, let's see, I'd like to make motion to approve. The application by Michael. Lavoe. Um. For, what are we doing here, the poultry for? Yeah, you know, I'm sorry. Um. To, to have twenty, up to twenty poultry. Um. With the following conditions, that. The, the poultry above twenty, um, there's a six-month period to remove, to relocate them from the property. And also the, there is to be no male poultry. Um, and then the food and waste manager practices will be implement implemented, so. So basically, yeah, in a, in a manner so as to not cause odor, attract flies and attract vermin. Well, did I get that right?
You're not watching Shannon.
No, that's not one.
There we go.
It's not easy when it's not written out.
I'll second that one.
Try to add the address in the zone.
Oh, yes, um, for property located at twelve Winthor, uh, Winthrop Drive in R nine zone.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby, everybody, now we're voting on, ready to vote. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, for the fur bearing.
Yeah, for bearing, okay, so the fur bearing now, we're saying, uh, uh, six months, we're gonna say a year, right, for twenty, right? So, okay, and then, um. And then we're saying that the hutches, so number two, require that all rabbit hutches be kept off, okay? So number two and then the one year, right?
Okay, and did you wanna move that, so you had talked about leaving, so.
Yeah.
The hut, the rabbit hutches, if he'll have to move them out from under the the trees and the shade of the trees. In order to comply with the ten foot offset. So that's. Because Garrett, Garrett's been out there a number of times, and he said it's, it's pretty close, it's, it's with, it's like kinda right at five feet or perhaps a little less at times, because the hutches aren't obviously in a straight line. Um. So he had them, I I believe his testimony was that he had them positioned where they were so that. They're under some shade truth. So. I'm good either way, I just want, so that we, rather than just blind say, okay, well, that that's, I had written that as the agenda review. Prior to that testimony coming into play, so.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that everyone is fully understanding of that information that was shared.
So I'm more concerned about that, the sideline.[1709.01]
Line line.
Maybe I, maybe we just say sideline. Is that possible? Side yard?
Okay, yeah.
Side property line.
Okay.
And then that would be on both. I mean, that would protect the other neighbor, yeah.
Sure.
Cause the one, those other two are considered rear lines, correct?
Correct, uh, yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, one, two, because why wouldn't we have five properties? So front, side, side, rear, rear.
Yeah, there's two rears on this one, yeah.
Do we need to be specific? Addresses or something?
And is a setback mainly due to noise?
What's that?
Is that, is the, is that distance just mainly due to noise?
No.
Yeah, I, to me, it's more of the.
Probably waste.
Waste.
Yeah, you're talking about waste.
Yeah. Right? And if, I think the way it works with bunnies, they they probably like. I don't know, they like a great, it just falls on the ground, is that?
Yeah.
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 Just ten feet, it's just a little bit of a. So.
So that's right, yeah, so ten feet on the side should should work for the hutches. So this is this. Um, I had to switch to the the survey. This was the as, I think, well, it's a subdivision for the two lots. Anyway, I'm not gonna. This is actually being referred to as a side, the best I can tell dimensionally.
Mm hmm.
Um. I'm not really sure where seven point five four comes from and what that. Is measuring to. The twenty five would be a rear. These seem to be. Side setbacks, and then this is the front at twenty.
Okay.
Um. And the seven, seven point five four, there's gotta be something in there, so. Who knows, at the time, there could have been a. A variance or something, granted, something when the sub, the lot was subdivided, so I'm not really sure. I can assure you, we don't have seven point five four setbacks on any chart. But I think these would be considered sides, and then this is the rear off on the. The east. Yeah.
Oh, so that, so even the one and.
So even this one technically is a side, but you can say, you can say from the, say from the west property line.
Okay, left property line, that's the one people's concerned about.
And ten feet off, ten feet off the west prop, no hutches within ten feet of the west property.
Okay. All right, give this a shot. Okay, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Michael. Lavoe, um. To raise twenty fur bearing animals. Um, with with the that property located at twelve Winthrop Drive in R nine zone with the following conditions. Um, that there be a limit of twenty and any additional that are existing, a one year time period to relocate. The animals, um. And that the hutches must be ten feet or greater off the west property line. And. And then I'm, and then I'm gonna put in the, and then the the food waste management practices will be, you know, implemented in a manner so as to not. Cause odor, attract flies and and attract vermin.
Second.
Yeah. Good.
Excellent.
Good, we got them. I got them all, right?
Yeah, so yeah, I think we're good.
Right vote? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed. Motion passes. One more.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, so this, okay, so this one has no. Just approve the business, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion. To approve the application by Michael Lavoe. Um, for a home business. Located at twelve Winthrop Drive in an R nine zone. To breed. Bunnies, bunny rabbits.
But breed and sell, it's the selling, right? It's the selling.
Breed, breed and sell, yeah, okay, so breed and so sell for selling of rabbits.
So the voting on this has to be.
So we're either approving the business. Or denying the business.
It's in. Positive, so we'd have to, if we don't want the business, we'd have to vote that.
That's correct.
Correction, if I'm.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep, because we want the motion and the affirmative.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we got a second on that? I don't know if we got a second on.
No.
I'll second that one.
All right, thanks, Bobby. Everybody clear now? It's in the positive.
Mm hmm, yes.
Okay. All is in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
We say iron.
What's that?
Say iron.
You could say no.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Does that work or? Does that work? Does that one over?
I think we got through it. Yes. And I've got just a handful. I know it's late, it's later than I, I think we all thought it was gonna be, um. So I've, uh. I've got just a handful of planners report things that, um. I think they're all signs. I think they're all signs, and I'm I'm gonna sneak. Sneak a fourth one in on you. Um. The first one is, uh, the four ninety nine Farmington Ave. Building, so it's at the intersection of four ninety nine as you're making the turn then onto South Road. And the building, uh, there's a sign on the west face of the building for Hartford. Orthopedic Associates. And they are. Changing the sign. So. Going from what's on the left to what is on the right. It complies from an area standpoint, it's all, everything, they're just changing the sign. It's a rebranding, relogo. Et cetera. So I was, other than they need a building permit, because it attaches to the wall, I wasn't gonna have them come in to you folks for a signed permit. So it's not really new, it's changing, just changing out the existing sign unless anyone. Has a strong objection, I'm gonna let them proceed to building permit. Okay, good, one down. Yeah. This toolbar has gotta go away. The toolbar keeps popping up and down on me. Um, next one up. Amped Fitness in Unionville.
Hmm.
Same idea, this one, um. I think there was a logo issue, some copyright thing had come up. So this is the old logo Amped E D Fitness. They're going amps with a Z fitness. That's it. The sign's gotta come down. They're gonna put the new one up. Good, okay, gonna keep on rolling. If you got a question, then stop me if there's, or there's something you don't, otherwise, these are all just going to building permit.
So I can just ask, ask a quick question, if you're sw- so you're swapping, it's exactly the same space?
Same size, same everything.
Same size, so they still need to come to us?
Um, so they have to, if. It has to go to building permit. And so the way the regulation is written, um. And if there is a change in the size, I can get this real quick, I think.
That's right.
Basically, it it requires a cursory review and because these ones in Unionville. Um, it's in the design district, so A D R C gets involved. So I've already. Bounce these off of Tim Eagles Chair of A D R C and Tim was. Had no interest in having these come through, because they're saying, because A D R C, they actually can, uh, comment on. Size, or or sorry, color. Normally, you don't, normally, there's no commenting on color. Um, except in these two, in Farmington Center and Unionville Center. So. No permanent sign shall be erected, relocated or altered. Except for normal maintenance and where a sign face is altered using similar colors, materials and lettering type. Without a zoning permit issued by the zoning enforcement officer following commission approval. That's the way the reg's written. So these, because it was pretty much a straight. Just exchange, I've told them, go ahead, like, I've told them, go ahead, so I'm letting you folks know. Because because of that regulation as a courtesy, obviously, if something, like, oh, wait a minute, Shannon, you kinda stepped out of your bounds, then. Feel free.
So Shannon, these normally would come through the commission as a new business and we're kinda redirecting them to planners report?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanna be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and historically, previous, these would have been all new.
Yeah.
Sign applications.
I know, we've talked about the sign.
These historically would have been new sign applications and. I can't, um, and it's not a lot, it's fifty dollars for the sign as opposed to two ten, it's fifty for the sign, as opposed to two ten for our permits, but. It's the time, like, it's the whole thing with it.
Yeah, oh, no, agreed.
So if it's, like, within. Four minutes, we're gonna hit four signs, and unless there's, again, something really concerning, then let me know. And this is flavors of new ah, no, Nawab is rebranding to Bollywood dreams. So again, same, they had taken over, the awnings will be redone in the spring when the weather is warmer, but they're gonna go ahead and redo the. Uh, panel sign. Um, and it'll, they're gonna, they showed these, but any of the other signs that. They had, I think there's a couple directory signs, so anything will be rebranded to the Bollywood dreams. Again, Unionville Center, Tim Eagles didn't. Want anything to do with it either. Um, final one is just in. And I'll be honest, I've got a few, I was just looking at this before the meeting. I've got a few things I need to follow up with them on. This is over by West Farm Small. Right as you're heading.
Oh, yeah.
South towards New Britain before you get to Target.
Yep.
Uh, it's small, it's, uh, that, it had been the, um, Porter's Books, and now it was, it was L A Fitness, now it's a Sporda. Apparently, it's going back to L A Fitness.
Oh, so really?
Yeah, seriously. Well, they just changed them all out now, but it was two years ago. It was like two years, it was two years ago, it was January twenty twenty two when we went to a Sporda. Cause I've been looking at that documentation. I've got a couple of questions for them on size, but assuming. Size, lighting, everything complies, I'm assuming. Nobody's got a big heartache over this, so they'll be, it's the same location, it's the sign over the door at the corner. And then one, one sign on each face, one that fronts. The road and one that fronts interior to the parking lot. So. I'm gonna go ahead and let those roll unless, yeah, so I'll make sure everything is tight. I've got a couple of questions for them, but otherwise, I'm gonna let them roll.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it, gentlemen.
All right. You know, oh, one, one quick i- idea. And I I I know we all gotta, wanna get out of here, but I'll make it quick. We were talking last time about that property at at Route ten and Route four. And I got the impression that, from the discussion, that the owner was, you know, hanging on to it, just didn't wanna deal with historic property and was sort of waiting us out there. What, what if we approached them with an offer to move that property to another location? And then that corner's free for development. It's right at the, you know, where you come into Farmington. I'd love to see something good done with it. Is that something that? You know, we could approach the person and say, hey, I and I I have no idea, do we, you know, does the town split the cost with him? I don't know what it would cost to move a historic building. Is that even a a feasible idea or? Do I go back to bed and stop thinking about this?
Um. I'll. The short answer is extremely, you're talking the, it, I'm sorry, what do you, the.
The Route ten and Route four, that that brown, brown building, that house there that.
No, I wanted to make sure I had the right corner.
Yeah.
You said it, you said it quickly and I'm processing, because I think you sent me an email, but on a different property.
No, that was the touch point one.
Yeah, yeah, that's one I was thinking about.
At twenty Scott Swamp, I had to shift gears, um.
I'll lie in bed at night, right?
It's, uh, it's more complicated than that, so there it, so. Farmington has a land acquisition. Committee, um, obviously, we wouldn't want, we're not interested in purchasing the land, but with. Respect to salvaging the building, there would need to be a referendum. So in order to have the town funds to do this. There would need to be a referendum and the. Underlying owner would have to have interest in engaging in that process.
And then where.
And I also am not really sure. That the building, unfortunately, at this particular time. Given.